So I would like to call this meeting to order at 6:07 PM on October 10th. Welcome to the Rutland Town School Board meeting. If everyone could stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start off with the approval of the agenda. Any additions, deletions, or changes? I would like to move the Spanish discussion right after the staff and student highlights as requested. Anyone else have any changes or deletions or anything? Okay. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve that.
Thank you, Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Thank you. Agenda is approved. Now, teacher, staff, community comments. We have no one online for that, but we do have a few teachers here. Does anyone want to make a general comment?
This is when I can talk.
So Tina, Mike Rowe was going to talk about Chinga Cook and then Suu Kyu was going to talk about reading and OG.
Right, but that's under the next section.
Oh, sorry.
Is that true? They're under the staff-student highlights, right?
Oh, yes. I apologize. Yes, sorry.
This is just the general. Alright, seeing as none, let's move on to staff and student highlights. Go ahead, Mike.
Chris, do you have that video that you can put up for me, please?
It's going to take a bit, Mike. I'm operating a student Chromebook.
Good endorsement.
I'll sit next to him.
Yeah, he's already trash talked a little bit over here.
So I do want to thank the board for their support of our 7th grade trip to Chinga Cook this past fall. It was a huge success. It was a large group with a lot of kids that just came into our school for the first time. And we felt that it went extremely well for all of them, from team activities to bonding to getting to know kids. The events and what takes place there is just invaluable. I thank Mike and the teachers that came along. Mike got to go up on the hike and then go back down. Some things, you know, are smooth and not smooth. The camp has changed since we went last, meaning different ownership and different philosophy. So, we talked when we were there and we'd like to modify it, meaning we'd like to only go for three days and two nights, which would cut down the cost because the price system is different, which didn't really register until we got there. And it just makes a little bit more sense for us, so that will bring the cost down tremendously, at least by a hundred bucks. And then, we have a very small class slated for next year, where we had a huge class slated this year. So I can't thank you enough for your endorsement. They had a great time. If Chris can, so I put together just a little slideshow that Chris can share with you. It was photos that were taken by people that were there. And just to give you an idea, you know, we arrived in the afternoon on Tuesday, in the evening, basically unloaded, you know, 50-something kids with all their stuff packed for 20,000 days. And it was nice when we got there and it rained. That's the last day. We always have a photo in the beginning, and so that's a photo. And then you can go to the next one, Chris, and just kind of quick and go through them. That was kind of like their daily schedule, so they would have breakfast at 8:00. Then they'd have morning activity, team building, ropes, canoeing, lunch, a little bit of rest time, afternoon activity, then choice time would either be swim, archery, or some sports. Then dinner, and then group activity. For example, we do campfires, we did a night hike, and we had a talent show, and then 10 o'clock, lights are out. Well, we all know what that's like with a bunch of kids on the trip being out at 10 o'clock. So, they were great. You can go to the next one, please, Chris. Thank you. Hopefully. We did, there's a video, you don't have to see it, you can look at this anytime. So we did low ropes courses for team building. They do different, they did a platform where they had to balance the platform with all of them on it. These are wires that they had to navigate across. Some people call it the Mohawk Walk. There was different ones. They had a huge area to go through and work together. Then the other one was, they have to swing on a rope to get from one platform to another. So these are just team building activities that have been constant when we've gone there. The other one is a video of them just going through, so it's no big deal. You can watch that whenever. So that was part of the day. Then the high ropes. They're up quite high, as you can see. The bottom little picture has the tree and where you can see that little person there. And then they're all harnessed in, ready to go. There's different elements that they can go up on and challenge themselves. Some just like to go up the ladder and think that that's enough. Some like to climb the pole and shimmy on the pole. Some are actually walking across a wire, grabbing a rope. And some, the bottom one, the shady one, is like they're climbing up a ship's ladder, and then they walk across a rope and then they get rappelled down. So that's the high ropes course. That's really important for them because they really get to step outside of their comfort zone and try, knowing that they're harnessed in and we're there encouraging them all the way to really push themselves, and that works out great. Then the hike. This is the first time that we've gone all the way to the top, so it's 2.5 up and 3.5 down. Now, I made it, and I didn't think I was gonna. Because the last, after Mike left, that's when it gets challenging. And they were, the camp was very impressed. They had planned along for people to drop and bring people back, but they were ecstatic that 90% of our kids made it to the top. They did not think that that was going to happen. And that's the picture up on top, looking back over Lake George with all of them. And then coming down those flat rocks was our way down, supposed easy way down. There were some stops along the way, and then you can see in one corner where we're actually single-file hiking up the trail to get to the top. But beautiful day to do it. Like I said, the first day we got there, the first full day, it rained. And that's why the next slide, which has canoeing, doesn't have many, because it rained. But I wanted to show you an old picture there. And those canoes, which they can hold 2, 4, 6, 8, there's like 10 or 12 kids, they're war canoes. That's an old picture, but same canoes. And we would take three out. So the first group had a beautiful kind of day, and then my group went out. And as we turned the corner, you could see it coming across, and we got absolutely destroyed with the rain coming back from the canoes. So, but that's a wonderful experience because they're paddling or trying to paddle. That's canoeing. And then another one is the lake and stream study that we do. They go actually into Lake George, right off the dock. They have a dock system, I didn't get a lot of those pictures. And they study the ecology of Lake George. They have all kinds of cool scientific stuff for them to look through. And this was a stream study, which is right next to where we were cabinning. And they go in the stream and they find crayfish and all kinds of different stuff and bring them out and talk about them. So that was another activity that they did. Then their choice time, they could swim. Usually they call it the polar plunge, but you know, we went so early that the water was beautiful. But they got a chance to swim. That picture right there, I think, was us at 7:30 in the morning, the big one in the top. And then the other ones, they had archery time, and there's some forts they can go hide up in. And then they can do some different, like there's basketball courts there, they can just play sports. We brought sports equipment for them to use, too. Dinner. We sit outside under a big tent. It's family style. You go up and get what you want. I didn't hear many complaints. The food is the food, you can get what you want, so they really didn't go hungry. And those are just some of the table sittings that we had as far as groups. And then odds and ends. We woke up in the morning, and literally that's outside my cabin on the top left. We counted 15 deer the first morning that were right there on an open field, and the kids were all just standing there in amazement. It was pretty cool. And then those are, those were our cabins. And just some other odds and then pictures that we had. So, that's kind of our trip. I don't think there's another one, I think that's the last one. But we can share that. Those are, the video that's not there, actually, is the boys practicing for the talent show in the cabin, which is hysterical, because they practiced for two days for this talent show, banging on stuff, and it was phenomenal. And the girls did some stuff, too. But they, they really had, I think they, they really had it down-packed, and they were practicing it at dinner. They really got into it, and it was, that's just part of the reason you go to camp. So, if you have any questions, once again, thank you so much for that. And we'd like to continue, knowing what we know now about the way that they run it. It'll be a lot smoother for us because the people that went had gone, and we were kind of like scratching our head at some of the stuff. But then we got to explain that it had changed kind of its philosophy. So, that's what I have. If you guys have any questions. Kids are talking about it alright?
Oh, yeah.
Did they have a good time?
Yes.
I mean, there were some complaints, like, "Oh, I didn't have water." I'm like, "I had water bottles for you," you know, that kind of thing. But no, they had a great time, so. Awesome. Well, if you have any questions or concerns, please do not hesitate. I will book a date for next year, and then we can talk about that as it goes. Actually, I already did book a date to make sure that we get it. And then, if we want it, we can continue. If not, that'll be up to you guys, and we'll go forward. Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you so much, Mike.
No problem. I get to go to another meeting now.
If I could just also, they, Mike and Amanda did survey our kids, too, which is great, just to get feedback from them. And it was, a few of the tweaks changes were because of their feedback, but overall, it was, it was great.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I have a little slideshow, too.
Suu, do you want me to pass anything out?
Um, I don't, I want to see how long it takes, because I know you guys have a busy schedule, and I could have fun and do all kinds of things with you, but I know that you're so let's see how long the slides take, and then we can go from there.
Okay.
Okay. So, my name is Suu Kinnell. I am here to talk to you a little bit about the Orton-Gillingham approach to structured literacy. I have a little quiz for you. If you wanted to jot it down, you're welcome to jot, or you can just kind of reflect on. I do have sticky notes, if anybody needs paper. No pressure. I have the answers, so you're good to go if you don't have paper, but you know what I did.
Does everybody, I have paper, too. Does anybody need paper?
Okay. So, number one, what three languages make up our English language today? So what three major languages make up English? You don't have to say, we're going to talk about it later. How many syllable types are in the English language? How many sounds does ED make as a suffix? Number four is, why would you double the P when spelling stopped? And number five, what is phonemic awareness? So, just like with a, I don't know if I should put them on, should I put them under pressure? Yeah. Okay. I knew all the answers, Ms. Kyu. I knew some of the answers, or, man, I didn't know any of the answers, Ms. Kyu. I'm like, hmm, okay. Okay. Okay, cool. Very good. New learning is always good. So it's fun to start with, with that. And if you were to ask some of my students, they would probably be able to answer most of those questions. They might say something a little bit different than phonemic awareness. They might say playing with sounds, but it's kind of cool. If you go to the next slide, you're going to go ahead and see, I was working with a student, an older student, a 6th grader, and I, we were talking about how we're doing OG, we're going to do OG. And he didn't know what OG was. And so, I thought this is kind of crazy. We're throwing this term OG around, and a lot of people don't know, it's actually two people, Orton, Samuel Orton and Anna Gillingham. He was a doctor, a neuropsych person, and a psychologist, and she was an educator and a speech pathologist. And in the 1930s, they came up with this structured literacy that helped students that were struggling readers, specifically boys that were having a hard time breaking the alphabetic code. So, that's who Orton and Gillingham are. If you go to the next slide, you'll see what it is. So it's, it's an approach based on, they use multisensory. It's cognitive, so that means it teaches towards your intelligent, it doesn't, so even like a kid in 6th grade who's working on foundational reading skills, we're going to be talking about who Orton and Gillingham were, we're going to be talking about the history of language. It allows them to feel like this isn't baby work. And if you move to the next slide, it'll talk about all the different parts that you're going to discover in an Orton-Gillingham lesson. So again, it's approach, it's language-based, you're going to use kinesthetic, visual, auditory, tactile activities. It's structured. The hot topic right now is structured literacy. It's direct and explicit. We're not going to ask students to do things that they're not going to feel that they can do. So it's emotionally sound. It teaches to automaticity, so you don't just keep moving. You want to make sure the kid has the concept and then circle back and keep coming. It builds, it's flexible, and it's prescriptive and diagnostic. So, it definitely is a really valuable tool that I've seen, and my students have seen tremendous growth using this approach, for sure. So, if you go to the next slide, it talks a little bit about what is multisensory. So again, that's the auditory, visual, tactile, so I have sand with me. Kinesthetic, we do body movements. We talk about when you say certain letters, what's your mouth doing? Is your voice on? Is your voice off? All of those things that help kids to make connections to what they're, what we're asking them to do. And then, again, because the hot topic is structured literacy these days, and we're moving away from maybe a balanced literacy approach to a more structured, this Orton-Gillingham approach is the grandfather of all of those other programs. So like, for example, the Wilson program, our Foundations program, the UFLY. It's all based on their research, Orton and Gillingham's research. So that's kind of cool to think about. And if you go to the next slide, we can try a couple of things if you guys are up for it. So, one of the things that was up on my list is phonemic awareness. And phonemic awareness is kind of the basis of how you begin to start learning to read. So you have to know that sounds make up words. So, anybody want to give it a go? Chips, chips, chips? No? Yeah, yeah, yeah? Come on! You need about three or four chips, so we can pass them all around. Oopsie, sorry. Want to give it a go? I won't put anybody on the spot, so.
Don't palm swear.
Oh, you did? Okay.
If our kids can do it, we can do it. I know. Yes!
Alright, and this will be the only activity to do, so you guys can move on with your, you can see it? Okay. So, what you're going to do is you're going to take your chip. This chip is going to represent a sound or a syllable. And so, what you're going to do, Tim, if you don't mind if I? I'll demonstrate. Oh, look, you majors all colorful.
Yeah.
Yep, yep, yep. You might be a nerd grader.
I'm pretty cool, actually.
Okay. So, you're going to, I'm going to say bat, you're going to repeat bat.
Good.
Okay, so, bat?
Bat.
You're going to touch bat, so it would go, b, bat. You're going to push your chips up, okay? Then you're going to take the b, and you're going to change it to a k, and you're going to build the word k, at, cat. You got it?
Mm-hmm.
Close? Okay, good. Alright, so do, my word is slime, so you're going to segment slime. You're going to go ahead and take the ts away. You have?
Line.
Make good sense? Okay, trilap? Good. You're going to change the at to an if.
Lit.
Light. Oh, good.
Oh, I didn't, didn't know if it was you. You wanted to shout it.
I thought people were being shy. Okay, you're going to say card? You're going to say it without the d. Good. So that's phonemic awareness, the ability to manipulate sounds. And that's the second part of an Orton-Gillingham lesson. The first part is handwriting, which I didn't go over, but it does teach cursive, which is super exciting. Another part of an OG lesson is with the blending board. So, there you were segmenting, this would be you blending. And so, I have my cards all here. And, sorry, you can't see. So what I would do, and these are all nonsense words, sometimes a real word comes up, sometimes words you don't want the kids to say, come on, so you have to be very quick. But you would just touch the sounds and say the words. So it would be k, cat, and they would blend, and you would change, you would change your vowel, j, off. And the kids would read. And then you could change the syllable type by adding magic e, j, off, j, off. So that's another blending. The other fun part that, that's another part of it, is thinking about what your lips are doing when you say certain sounds. So notoriously, Bs and Ds are reversed, right? Bs and Ds. And so, one of the things that you can do, again, bringing in the kinesthetic, auditory, visual, you can think about what's your mouth doing when you say? You can look in the mirror. Want to tell us what your lips are doing when you say m on the spot? Yeah. What happens to your lips? Do they come together, or are they open?
Open.
The first part.
Oh, the first part, closed.
Yeah, they're closed. They make a line, right? Yeah. So, when you think about that sound, you want your lips to come first, and so, you can connect that to the straight line of the B. So the lips first, and then you put the belly on. And that helps kids with their reversals. Does it solve all the world's problems of Bs and D reversals? No, but it gives them an auditory, visual, and kinesthetic kind of way to remember. So, those are kind of just fun kind of things. And the other thing that I brought was sand. Who doesn't love to play with sand? Right? And another part of the lesson is for me to go through my card deck drill. Tim Martin Glax. So, I would go through my deck, and you would just say the letter name.
H.
And then you would say the sound. Good. And then you would take your two fingers, and you would make an H in the sand. But you can only do it if the sand stays in there.
Got it.
Good. And then, we'll just try one more.
P?
Good. Good. And then you would just use your two fingers.
Ah, two.
Yeah.
Look at that.
And there's more neurons in the tips of two fingers than one. So again, it's kind of getting to your, to your brain. So, kind of cool. So just a couple parts of the OG lesson. It takes me two days to get through one lesson because of my half-hour blocks. I do have some kids that I get to have for 45 minutes, so sometimes we can get through a whole lesson that way. So, okay, that's enough torture for you guys. Go to the next one. I'm here also to say thank you, because I just got my certification, my associate's level certification. So years ago, I got classroom certified. Now I am at the certified level. And what that means is that I've done 60 hours of coursework, I've done at least 100 Orton-Gillingham lessons, and I've had 10 observations with a fellow. And then I had to fill out a lengthy application and send it to the Stern Center. It had to be approved by them, and then they sent it to the Academy, and it had to be approved by the Academy as well. So, I'm very excited to be at that level. And that allows me to work under the supervision of a fellow. So I have a fellow at the Stern Center. If I had any questions, I could refer to her and ask her questions and things that I am still learning. And there's lots of things that I still need to learn. But anyway, so thank you to the board for doing that. And then, if you page one more, I just love this quote. "Most of us think we know what reading is, and that's not surprising. After all, we can read. But reading is tricky, reading is complex." And that's from them Fox's Reading Magic. So, we ask our kids to learn to read, and there's a lot going on, for sure. So, anybody want to know the answers to the quiz?
I was just going to add, that was going to be my question. Can we go back to the first one?
Okay. I wrote them out here. So, the first thing is the, our English language is made up of three main languages. Greek has about 11% of our words come from Greek, and those are math and science words, like biology, those kinds of words. Latin is 55% of our words. Those are longer words, like ambition. And Anglo-Saxon are the small sort of more common words. You kind of think of like going in like hearty and table, and those are those Anglo-Saxon words. So, there are six syllable types in our language. We have close, which give us short vowel sounds. Open give us long. VCE give us a long vowel sound. R controlled. We have vowel teams, and consonant LE is another type of syllable. So, why would you want to know the syllable type? So you can figure out what the vowel is doing. Another one was, how many sounds does ED make? So if you think about it stopped, it's making the t. If you say planted, it's doing id. And if you were saying build, it's doing n. So, three different sounds. If you have a one-syllable word, right after the short vowel sound is, is one consonant, if you're going to add a vowel suffix, you have to protect that vowel by putting, I call them another soldier. You want to put your another soldier in there to protect the vowel. So, some things in English are kind of predictable. So if you know some of those spelling rules, right, it can help you with encoding. And phonemic awareness, it's just understanding that words are made up of sounds, and it's the ability to manipulate those sounds. How'd you do on your quiz?
I got them all right.
Now nobody else wants to share.
I was like, look!
Sorry. Oh, my gosh.
But I learned from watching Amazing Teachers. I learned from Ms. Kyu, an amazing teacher, so.
So, thank you for allowing me to do this and to share with you guys. And I don't know if the board, I don't know what this group is, but you're all welcome to come in and see a lesson in action. Anytime. What grades do you do this with? So, this is apple code from grades K to adult. But for me here, I'm working with 1st graders to 6th graders right now. Have you noticed any difference with the kids using UFLY? So, UFLY is based on the Orton-Gillingham approaches, research, and so on and so forth. Thanks. So I see, I will see, and I think we will see as a school, that we'll have really solid foundational reading skills, and that will help kids to not have reading errors or reading difficulties because of the foundation. Now, some kids will obviously need more time, just because that's the way readers work, but I think it's going to be a great, yeah. I love that we're all doing it, so that by the time the kindergarten kids, if it's adopted next year, I don't know if I'm speaking out of turn here, but if it's adopted and it continues through, I'm sure our 2nd graders will be leaving with a really solid foundation for things like, why do you double the P? You know, what's a closed syllable, so on and so forth. All of those things.
And it's interesting, because Mike and I were just talking about some classrooms that we've observed. And I said, with UFLY, I noticed that one of our teachers brought the compact mirrors out. And I'm like, oh, my gosh! I've seen this in reading intervention with the OG approach. And I was really nervous, because I'm like, all these 1st graders have mirrors. What are they going to do with these mirrors? It's like the first four weeks of school. And the teacher was like, Sarah, I could tell you were a little nervous. And just because she had set up, you know, responsive classroom, those expectations routines, and they were talking about Bs and Ds, and exactly what you said. And I've noticed, that's something that I've noticed in K through 2. I think that was something that was missing with the Foundations, too. It was more of that speech and language, and how, what your mouth looks like, and the sounds that come out. So I thought that was really exciting. And then Mike had shared the same thing that he saw in kindergarten, that somewhere in our reading rooms that more frequently use that OG is that there were actual pictures of students' mouths and what those sounds make, so.
Right. So they're getting rid of word walls and creating sound walls instead. So a word wall would have like a T, and under T would be like Thomas and thing. And then there'd also be like tip, and like the T isn't making the same sound, right? But if you have the phoneme TH, you can have a picture of your mouth, and then kids can make a connection that way. So, lots of good things. Thank you. Good luck with the rest of your meeting.
Thank you so much, Ms. Kyu.
And congratulations.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes, yes. I keep celebrating. I keep buying things for myself.
I said that. I mean, the amount of work that goes into that is just.
And it was during COVID, so it took me a little bit longer to do it, but I got it done. So, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Alright. And then we moved up the Spanish discussion. So, thank you, Tsuk for joining us today. I think, if I remember correctly, the board brought this up to discuss it just a little bit further. We were told during the scheduling conversation that I think 7th and 8th grade went from five classes every two weeks to four classes every two weeks.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And then we had talked to Rutland High about getting information about how our students do when they go there. And, you know, in the past, was it enough for them to be proficient into Spanish 2? And how many kids continued in Spanish? How many kids went to Spanish 1? We weren't able to get that information, so I don't know. I think there are some ways to find out the information by maybe surveying families, but we haven't done that yet.
So I think that that's something that the board could decide if we wanted to do that going further. But I think just having a deeper conversation of, our kids are getting Spanish from pre-K through eighth grade. And they are mostly going into Spanish II, it sounds like. Is that what, like, we want if they're getting Spanish all along? Is that, you know, is that what we want? Or do we want more? Do we want to think about offering other languages as well? To have choice for the older kids? That kind of thing. We're just brainstorming it a little bit and just kind of checking in to see if what we're doing right now is something that we want to continue with or just look at a little bit more.
Okay. Well, the numbers that we have had, the numbers we were able to get at one point from high schools, a lot of our, I mean, Kate, or I don't know, maybe you guys could tell what percentage of our students attend Rutland High School, which is what our goal for the foreign language program has been. Sorry, not our goal. Our curriculum goal is to finish Spanish II, finish Spanish I through five, six, seven, eight, so that they can enter Rutland High School at a Spanish II or a Spanish II level. At least to have that option. And so with that in mind, it's very successful. The numbers that we were able to get at one point.
Which may have been last year or so. Because I think they did give us information at one point.
Yeah. So we have three, four, four school years here from the past. And we have 10 out of 12 went through Spanish II. We have 12 out of 15. And then 18 out of 18 going on to Spanish II. And 16 out of 16. So very few choose to take Spanish I. And I think these numbers are from the first, just freshman year. So a Rutland Town student could go into Rutland High School and not take a language their freshman year at all and fit it into their schedule their sophomore year or junior or senior, which of course I wouldn't suggest. But that is an option. So if you're saying, geez, only 12 kids, you know, from Rutland Town took Spanish? That's not necessarily accurate. That of their freshman year in that particular group, 12 kids took it their freshman year, which, you know, doesn't mean they didn't take it, you know, sophomore, junior, or senior. But yeah, so, and if, you know, if we break down the proficiencies that they met, extremely successful. I didn't do the math from when I got the numbers, but very few did not pass proficiency. So I think what Rutland Town is supporting in the district is, has been very successful so far. There have been changes the past, you know, two to three years since I have been here. The biggest change has been fifth grade. Fifth grade really seems to be in this bubble of one day a week. Okay, two days a week. Okay, two and a half days a week. Okay, back to one day a week. So fifth grade has been a little bit different.
So with seventh and eighth losing a day every two weeks.
Correct.
I don't remember what fifth and sixth got. Are they the same? Did they also lose time?
So fifth, yeah. So fifth is only one day a week this year. Last year, they were two and a half days. So it was two and three alternately. So fifth lost a big chunk. Sixth, seventh, and eighth were two and three days every two weeks. And they are only two days a week this year.
Even in sixth, too, you said?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So with that, do you think that you'll still be able to get to the same goal with so much less over those years?
So what I, so I spoke with Rutland High School in, with our new time with curriculum. And Rutland High School has since adjusted their expectation. I don't say on us particularly, but when I said, where are you guys at with your Spanish II curriculum? Where would we want to have our children? And they said, if you can get through this chapter, that would be great. And that was actually one chapter less than what they had previously told us. So that was great news. I said, oh, my goodness, thank goodness. That takes a lot of pressure off me. And well, because, so this is the first year I've taught eighth grade. Until this year, Peter Patterson has taught eighth grade.
So you're teaching eighth grade now?
So I have pre-K through eighth grade. Yep. Which is great because, I mean, I personally obviously love it. But what I really love about it is when I see those eighth graders, I know exactly what you've done. I know where we left off. And there's, you know, there's, I don't want to say there's holes, but there's no skipping a B. Like, no, we did this last year. Remember, we did X, Y, and Z. And so that in itself is kind of, okay, hit the ground running. Here we go, review over. So that has had a lot of benefits. So time wise, last year, just to give you guys some numbers. So sixth grade in 2022, 23 had roughly 65 hours of Spanish. And, you know, give or take with field trips and testing and that kind of thing. This year, they have 49. It doesn't sound like, okay, 49, 65. But, you know, when you're talking weekly in a foreign language, you know, you need, if I printed it out, you need, students need an X number of hours in the language to be obviously proficient, but to be able to speak it. And if they don't get those hours, then you can do, you know, as much as you want. Without the hours, they're not going to reach the Spanish II. But getting back to the question, so with Rutland High School's adjustment? Yes, we will be on track to, in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, to finish Spanish I and get our students.
My daughter's in Spanish at Rutland High School, and I just had her conference this week. And the teacher had voluntarily mentioned that because she's taking Spanish II, that he starts at, like, back in Spanish I for the first month. Because that's kind of, it sounds like that's where they're expecting you to get to, close to there. So there's a little overlap in review. Is that correct? That the chapter that they're talking about is, that they're, one less chapter is still in chapter one? Or Spanish I?
No, no. Rutland High School would hope that I, that we get through chapter one and two. And that they enter Rutland High School beginning on chapter three.
But they changed that now? Or it used to be chapter four?
That is the new change now.
Okay.
Is, yeah.
So they changed from chapter four to chapter three?
What was, I don't, was it here when you guys discussed this? What was the reasoning for decreasing the Spanish of sixth, seventh, eighth?
That was our increased instructional time from the SU for our new literacy model in math. So we were increasing our time in ELA and math. Therefore, we had to reduce specials. So that time had to come from somewhere.
I think part of our discussion was like, so we have a fixed amount of time and a fixed amount of resources, right? So like, the question, I guess, that I posed was, do they still get to the finish line in eighth grade if they started in fifth? Or started in fourth? They're like, how beneficial is that early introduction to? Because you're talking about hours. Like, how much does the pre-K get? Like 10 hours? I mean, it can't be much, right?
Pre-K is, this year is 12 hours. Last year was 25 hours. Pre-K is with, I don't think it was able, for my schedule, to get pre-K in there twice. So they are, pre-K is just 20 minutes a week this week, this year.
And then kindergarten through fourth have the same?
Kindergarten through fifth this year. They're all at 25 hours. So 42 minutes for roughly 37 weeks, which is like 14, 14, 18 minutes.
And how much does seventh, eighth, or sixth, seventh?
Sixth, seventh, and eighth are twice a week.
Forty.
Forty-two minutes. For 37 weeks. So it's roughly, sixth, seventh, and eighth is 29, 60 minutes, which is 49 hours.
Forty-nine.
Better double check it.
And then sixth, seventh, and eighth used to have 65 hours each?
Yes.
So we're cutting down quite a bit from what they used to have.
Yes. Which is why it was a very big relief that Rutland High School said, okay, chapter three. So that was, yeah. And so, you know, unfortunately, it just, it takes away like culture. Like there's National Hispanic Heritage Month. It's been going on for a month. Like, language or culture? Okay, a little bit of culture, but let's get back to the language. You know, I feel a need to kind of, not speed track, but like, okay, I gotta get, I gotta get these kids ready.
And which also kind of makes it a little bit less fun when you're not able to add color and background to some of the things that you're doing. So it's your.
I mean, you'd certainly like to spend more time on culture. But you, you know, you present it and give it in a different way. And it's not, you know, it might not be a project. And you're getting it in with, you know, with language and, but just not that hands-on, look at buildings. Yeah.
Does anyone else have any comments or questions for, to, I know she has other engagements today.
Oh, that's okay. You know, one of the things that you mentioned that I didn't touch upon was, you know, when you said the ages. Certainly, the younger they hear the language, the better. And, you know, of course, we all know that. You know, having the pre-K and the K first, second. They're so interested and alive and into it. I mean, I have my first and second graders. Will you please speak all in Spanish the whole class again? And they're so excited. And, you know, and now my fifth graders come in and, you know, one student, and he says, will you do that Spanish thing the whole time again? And so, you know, like, yeah, of course I will. But you don't want to lose the kids that are frustrated either. And, oh, I hate Spanish. All she does is speak Spanish. So, you know, there is a little bit of a balance there. But they love it. I mean, the younger kids absolutely love it. And you get to, about fifth grade, I find, is the teetering point where they're kind of like, you know, what are their friends thinking? And I don't want to raise my hand. What if I get it wrong? What if somebody laughs at me? So that, you know, after fifth grade, their defenses start to go up. And that risk-taking for the language, it's very difficult. And I wonder the, I wonder the same thing sometimes. Like, you know, really 40 minutes a week with kindergarteners? Like, how much are they really getting? I mean, you get parents, I get parents telling me, oh, they sing that song all week long at the house. I was at a basketball game last year. And a kindergartner sat in front of me. And it was, of course, winter because it was basketball. And so she's, hola señor. I said, hola. And she says, look, I have my chacata and I have my gorro. And like totally unprompted, she is pulling all these vocabulary terms out of, you know, with her jacket and her hat and this and that. And I'm like, okay. We're doing okay. This is, this is what we want. And these kids are pulling this vocabulary out. And we're not even in the classroom. So it's working. And, you know, they're, and they're excited. And you listen to the kids in the hallway. I stand in the hallway for the dismissals and arrivals. And, you know, it's hola, buenos dias, señora. It's adorable. It's, I mean, so they love it. And you talk to people in the community or even outside the community that don't know that we do this here at Rutland Town. And they say, are you kidding me? You teach foreign language that young? Like, yeah, our district does. And we're so lucky to introduce it young because they're sponges. They just want to learn.
Do you, I guess, like, if you had your way and you, you didn't have to worry about other schedules at all, what do you think would be your ideal, like, way to teach sixth, seventh, eighth?
Every day? For, you know, the 40 minutes works well. You know, well, I mean, I did it at Rutland High School at the block scheduling. You know, I mean, you can, you can do, you can do the, you know, 80, 85 minutes and split the day. But every day for a language works best if you, if you have contact with them every day. I, of course, don't want them to have a choice of Spanish or French. But, you know, I mean, where our world is going, I'm not, I'm not saying French isn't helpful because obviously it's, any language is helpful. But, you know, you look forward and jobs are very, very heavily needed in Spanish specifically.
You go to any major city on the eastern coast, there's a lot of Spanish.
Yeah.
And southern coast and western coast.
I mean, people are needed and managers are needed to speak Spanish. So I love choice, and it would be great. But you'll, you'll lose, you know, you'll lose the kids going into Rutland High School to take Spanish II. You'll start getting kids going a little bit of French. And then they'll go to Rutland High School and take one year of French, go back to Spanish. Or they'll take one year of Spanish and then go one year of French. And you're not really learning your language when you only give yourself a year, you know, to learn it. So I think we would lose the depth of, you know, of the program. And without, you know, in the classroom, I mean, there's lots of different programs you could use. You can, you know, you could do video. You could do streaming, anything, but without someone in front of you navigating the language and holding up a piece of paper 18 times and saying, ese es un papel, papel, papel. Okay, I get it. That must be a papel. You know, but if you're not interacting with the, with a human, with a teacher, I think, I think the alternate means for kids to learn it is going to begin to, you know, interfere with the priority and the learning. So I would want middle school every day for 40, 50 minutes.
If you could.
Yeah.
Have you noticed a difference this year compared to last year? Having them a little bit less or not yet? Because it's kind of early still.
I mean, I notice I'm not getting through obviously enough, a lot of material. It's a big change to only have them two days. And homework-wise, it's a little bit more difficult typically. I prefer not to give them homework because they go home and they don't understand. There's no one at, there's no one there at home to help them. Or you don't, you're not there. So they're just doing Google Translate. So you ask them to write something, and they're typing it into the computer and then writing it onto their paper. So I really try to keep all the work in the classroom. And you just can't get through as much. So the material, I know, is going to, is going to suffer. But stay on pace and keep pushing on. Yeah. But time will tell. You know, I mean, well, we'll know in two or three years if we continue on just twice a week. We'll start to see.
The results.
Yeah. Thank you.
Go ahead, Colin.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Is this, is it mandatory in through eighth grade versus like?
Mandatory, yeah.
Mandatory? Sorry. Do we have, and I'd like to hear the numbers on the Spanish student. Do we have any students that choose a different language to enter high school?
I'm sure we do. And I, just in talking with families, they, there are, there have been a few kids that said, you know, I can take Spanish I eBlock and I play sports. So I'd rather do that so I can get, you know, years ago it was an A or a four because it's a review. I mean, it's all about choices too. So there are some kids that take German or French, I'm sure. But, yeah, again, we asked for that and weren't able to receive that from Rutland.
Sure. And last, last follow-up. Given that we spend so little time with the youngsters at 20 minutes, 18 minutes, and in emerging, is there a crux where you're finding, like, is it really clicking in fourth and fifth grade? Like, are we doing them a service by pulling them out of basic instruction for 20 minutes when we have kids struggling with English language? Would it be better served to wait till we can give them more time in a fourth and fifth grade setting? Just thinking like, in emerging school, they're learning both. You know, they're learning words, but they're learning them simultaneously in dual languages. A lot of these kids have dual linguists at home. Where is 20 minutes for a kindergartner helping? I mean, they're getting some of the basics, blah. But, you know, is it really doing it until third or fourth grade? That's my question. And I know that's so jumpy, but.
The, the kindergartners get 20, I'm sorry, pre-K get 20 minutes of instruction a week. And that I could say would be arguable. How effective are we? Yes, it's great they're hearing it. But, you know, once a week for 20 minutes at best is a stretch to say that there's, you know, significant learning going on with the, with the pre-K kids, given their antiness and moving and attention span. But after that, I would argue anybody to pull away my kindergarten first, second, third grades because, again, they're sponges. They love it. You know, if I, if I'm teaching time, date, hello, how are you? They come in, well, this year, so they came in this year. And. They come in, well, this year, so they came in this year, and, you know, I don't have to reteach it. They still know it, and you pick up where you left off, and they get it, and you move on. And so they are soaking it in. There's retention from year to year that's been successful. I mean, some kids do get pulled from Spanish due to interventions, and so there are some-
For IEP students, yeah.
IEPs, yeah. So I understand your, you know, the question, it's a valid question, but I would say absolutely there is retention from year to year, and there's lots of benefits that they're getting to having it kindergarten, first, second grade. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else have any other questions for Teresa?
I mean, I guess if we're done, I mean, this is my own personal perspective. It might not make any sense, I don't want to put any onus on someone's classroom, but there was like, this first through third grade, it'd be great if, like, on the whiteboard, it was like, the date and the day or whatever, and Spanish right underneath of it, right? So they're only seeing you once a week, but then they see, like-
Oh, in their own classroom?
Yeah, like, in their general classroom. If it was like, you know, October 25th, or whatever, and Thursday or whatever, and then it was like, Spanish underneath, just as you worked with your colleagues, right?
Yes.
That it was reinforced in some way. So they just saw some dash of Spanish besides that one day a week for 20 minutes.
Some teachers that are more comfortable with their own language skills do do that. I know Mrs. DeBoye in pre-K is comfortable, and so she does one of our songs in Spanish, and she'll, you know, add in words when, you know, when she feels comfortable. So right now, in my first and second, we're doing, well, Chila, my backpack and things that I bring to school. And so I have a, you know, just a colored poster that I'll be giving to all the teachers in the first and second grades. So, you know, just put this in your classroom, and if they're packing their backpack or unpacking, you know, the kids will see it. But, yeah, any buy-in with the other teachers, I would absolutely agree, any kind of reinforcement like that. I was just talking with Mike Rowe today. He does a daily townie where the eighth graders, seventh and eighth graders do announcements, and they do lunch, they do a lunch menu, they do date, they'll say, what's scheduled, what's happening in the day for sports. And so I spoke with him actually today about doing that in Spanish. And so the seventh and eighth will do their daily townie with Mr. Rowe, and then ultimately, at some point during the year, then we'll either some, yeah, just add it on to Mr. Rowe's, or we'll do our own daily townie in Spanish. And so that was really fun. And then, you know, he said I could work with Shannon, and so anything to kind of crisscross the lines.
Like, speaking it, too, because it's hard to have opportunities to speak it. So having that extra opportunity for the kids would be fun, too.
Yeah. So can I ask, what is your goal? I mean, what would you guys love to see?
I am, I think, I don't know. I think we just wanted to start thinking about it a little bit. I mean, we have Spanish for so long, and I guess just no, like, thinking about is, you know, being ready for Spanish 2, all we want out of having Spanish from pre-K through eighth grade, is that what we want from it? And it sounds like if we're increasing our time in other areas and decreasing our Spanish time, then maybe we do need that spread out to get there, right? When you take into other classes that you have to do. And then just questioning, you know, are we happy with just Spanish alone? Right now, we don't have any space for any other teacher anyway, so there's that. So, and it's hard to even fit in Spanish, so I think it would be even more complicated trying to figure out another.
I think something, I mean, that was the thing, something has to be taken away. So I think we do a great job of offering our kids just the exposure, you know, with independent study, band, chorus, art, music, library, some of that tech piece. You know, and just talking to even some of my friends that teach in larger, you know, like Massachusetts, like, you are in elementary school, and you offer all of those things to kids. But we need to also offer the, you know, foundational literacy in math, science. So you've got to make some tough decisions. So we felt that the schedule supported, you know, our new literacy model, what we needed for math. And, again, some kids have to make those choices, just like when they go to high school. Are they going to take physics, or are they going to take an elective that they need to take? So our job is to expose them to these things and get them ready for careers and college if they choose.
And I also think, go ahead, Colin.
Oh, I was just going to chime in on, I think, if we're going to have the program proficiency to a Spanish 2 levels appropriate, it sounds like, while, what I'm hearing, without the data we got back this year, whatever, that seems like the kids are very prepared to those who do want to Spanish or enter into Spanish 2 at high school, given the proficiency and the leg up. So it sounds like the program's working great. Like, we keep evaluating, it's taking time away from it, and I understand we have time experience, but I think that should, you know, that should be a goal. Should we add other languages? I would argue yes, but that's a different time, a different subject. I think if we're going to have a program and we're sending our kids off to high school at a Spanish 2 level, that's pretty great for kids at preschool, pre-k. So thank you for the updates and all the things.
No, I appreciate the updates, too. I think one of the other reasons that I had asked to bring this up, too, is just talking to some other foreign language teachers in the area. They also say, the more repetition you have during a week, the stronger the instruction or easier it is for students to keep it. So knowing that we went down, I wanted to kind of see, you know, how it's going still. So I think it would be great to maybe, you know, talk again at the end of the year and just see how this year went, and where you are at with sixth, seventh, and eighth, and how that compares to last year, so that we can kind of, just kind of keep track of it going forward.
Yep. And, you know, I will tell you, one of the, I don't want to say bigger challenges, but for me, the bigger challenge is as you get a new sixth grader, you get a new eighth grader. And instead of being able to start at chapter two and doing a very quick review of chapter one, I have to, you know, somehow piece together that entire chapter for the new students, so that they're not completely overwhelmed. And a student comes in in April, you know, or a student comes in in late December, and, you know, you kind of have to backtrack and consider those new students coming in, and we had a lot of them. So, you know, that certainly slows things down, too.
The inn is full, that's what I'm telling people. That has been a big struggle, is that we don't have these kids from preschool through eighth grade. A lot of them move in at various grade levels. And some of them say, "Uh, do I have to be in Spanish?" You know, even parents will say, we've never, like, they know nothing about Spanish. But Teresa does a great job, I think, sometimes, at exposing and accommodating, differentiating. And I, you know, I was thinking of another one of our students that's now in third grade that really struggles with the English language. And you were at, I think, a baseball game, and he had his iPad out and went right up to Mrs. Sunderland and was speaking all the, I mean, you were so excited to tell me.
Oh, my goodness.
And he struggles with the English language, not only reading and writing, but speaking. And he has just soaked this in, and he's so excited about it. So I think, you know, the more, everybody has strengths and weaknesses, and the more we can expose our kids to a variety of things, the better. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, I mean, it's the younger kids that just excite me and shock me, you know, on a weekly basis of just where they pull this out of their brains. And it's like, I'm like, "Oh, my gosh, this is working, this is so exciting." But, yeah. So thank you for having me. Thank you for my input, I do appreciate it. And, yeah, I'd love to come back later in the year.
Yeah, just check in and see.
Yeah. But I'll visit soon and show you what we do.
That's awesome.
Put you guys in the hot seat.
We love it.
Yeah. Forty-two minute immersion.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Teresa.
All right. So we'll move on to finance. Louis is not here. All the financial reports are in your packet, so if you have any questions, you can let Louis know, and we can discuss it next time if it's still an issue. And then, just to speak a little bit about the budget, we talked last time about some of the requests or priorities for the budget. We talked about some new things, like lifetime sports potentially, which I think we'll be talking about a little bit later, about the possibility of a second kindergarten para. The seventh grade trip needs to be put into the budget, and potentially Mutual Link, which we're still, I think, waiting to hear about the grant or not. So that'll be something. But either way, whether we get the grant or not, there'll be annual fees. So we should probably build that into the budget as if we might want to use it. Does anyone else have any thoughts about the budget priorities?
Tina, if I could, when we had the meeting with Mutual Link, I think you had asked Greg about updating security cameras and stuff, and that we're still waiting for the grant, but I think you wanted to hear from him, his recommendation, right? Because he had those numbers.
Okay.
Didn't you say that when we had the meeting? With Mutual Link?
So I think that basically, it sounds like we're a pilot school. I don't remember saying that.
We talked about our cameras not being, a couple of them were broken, so we're waiting for Royals to give us an update, but our camera system being very dated. And Greg was talking about that. And then you had said, "Can you come to the board to give us numbers if this grant doesn't go through?" Because he embedded the new updated security system within that grant.
Correct. But, so we're waiting to hear about the grant, because we don't have it yet.
Correct.
Right. So I think November, we might have that information.
Okay. But you did want Greg to provide that information if we do not get the grant, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That sounds good. Sorry, thank you for refreshing.
Yeah.
But, yes, I think that we are going to hear a little bit more about that as time goes on, but we should at least think that we're going to use it and make sure that's in the budget. One thing I had brought up, I think, last meeting also, was just how the board feels about busing for summer enrichment for the ESY and the academic portion of the summer and/or the girls' and boys' club. So Louis got some prices for us, and I have to pull that up here, of what that would cost. Yes, but I also asked him the question of, so that, on the budget sheet that he gave us, it mentions the one price, and that is for one trip to school and one trip back from school. So I also asked if he could find out how much it was if we went three times, so to school in the morning, after summer tutoring, and then after Boys and Girls Club at the end of the day. And he said that, let's see where he put it. I think it was about $190 extra a day. Sorry, I know he answered my question, but I can't find it. Oh, it is $190. So it was, it would be a total of $570 a day if they did three trips versus two trips, which would be $380. So I just wanted to hear what the board thought about that, just to increase access for students. And also, Sarah was going to find out about, from parents, whether transportation was an issue or a barrier or not.
I did not do that.
Okay.
Sorry, there's been a lot of surveys.
Yes, there have.
Do you want me to survey families that attended summer school last year, or those that were recommended for summer school last year, and ask if transportation was a barrier?
Well, I think asking, if transportation were provided, would that have made a difference in whether your child attended? I think that would be a good question to know.
So you want me to ask those that were referred to summer school and ESY, or just summer school?
Well, what does the board, before you go do extra work, what does the board think about this? So there, it would be-
I thought you were getting numbers first, I apologize.
It's okay. So it would be $10,000 for a five-week program for the summer, for one bus twice a day, and it would be a third more than that. So, or probably $15,000, I guess, for one bus, three times a day, to increase access to the summer enrichment Boys and Girls Club. Does anybody have any thoughts? Or, I know we have a lot of other things in the budget this year that we're, we've been adding on, so is this something just to think about for the future, or see where the budget comes out and add it in later?
I wonder if we wait one year, just because the Boys and Girls Club thing was so news it was. I mean, you guys got that.
Well, this is more the summer tutoring, so kids that are-
But you're also, you would offer transportation home from Boys and Girls Club, is what you're saying?
Potentially, but that would be an extra $5,000. So-
And pickup for Boys and Girls Club.
Well, it would be the same pickup. So they get the same pickup as the kids that are coming in for the summer tutoring. And then there would be a choice to either leave after summer tutoring, or stay through the afternoon for the Boys and Girls Club.
And I think ESY is a little bit different, because you may only go for an hour. So I just think logistics, you've got to think about that, like, some kids may only come two days, five days a week.
We could say this is when the, this is the busing that we run. And so I guess it, I mean, if it worked for the ESY kids, I don't think we can do special runs, potentially. And if it's ESY, that might also be under-
Special ed.
Special ed, anyway.
Right, but I don't think we can say, we would have to do it for all kids.
Well, if they could make those times, I guess, maybe their ESY could be structured that they could-
What happens if we have one bus? We say we have transportation, and we get 150 kids here, because they all say that they can pay, then we don't have enough to, you know, we would have to, obviously, then cap it, but.
Or if we have one bus and three kids.
Yeah, or one bus, we'd pay that.
And then someone else said, was it you, Tim, that, or maybe it's about a van, yeah, instead of a bus.
There are all sorts of restrictions around use of school. So if we would use our current school vans to transport, say, three or four kids, yes, but when you start getting upwards of, over seven kids and close to 10, then you're actually, you have to have a certified school bus driver, the vehicle has to, do we make the same safety standards as a school bus? It's just, it's another whole set of regulations and headaches for us.
So it's not worth it.
From a cost efficiency standpoint, wouldn't it be smart for us?
I believe Rutland City has busing for their summer program, so that was one of the reasons I-
They hire their own, they have their own buses and drivers. They have their own transportation.
So is this something that we want to table and maybe just have Sarah ask those families and at least know if there's a barrier?
I think we need to know what the numbers are.
Well, there were 40 students last year, so if we limited it just to summer tutoring.
I would just, if somebody, if you want to specifically tell me what questions you want me to ask and to whom.
So-
Like, for ESY, for Boys and Girls Club, for-
I think right now, we're looking more for the schooling aspect of it.
Yeah.
So just making sure that we have access for kids. So if one of the reasons that, or if the only reason they didn't, weren't able to come, which may not be the case, but if the only reason they were not able to come was because they had no ride, then they missed out on extra help with school and academics that they could have benefited from because of that. So we're trying to prevent that. Yes, Colin? Yes, Col- yes. Yes, Col- yes.
Oh, I, this is a very low priority for me personally and the board's view. I would just ask Chris and Sarah, do you think this is an issue for people not coming? And if it isn't, in your assessment, I don't think I need to see anything any further. We have a whole lot of budget that we need to battle for. And I don't think this is something we're paying our attention with needing teachers and other things personally. But if they tell me that this is an issue for kids not getting instruction, then I'll support, but I don't seem to think we can make up an issue if there isn't one there.
I don't think we know. I think that's one of the reasons that we wanted to just ask those families. But maybe you do know. I don't know.
I know of a few that did not attend, but similar to what Abby said, is that we got Boys and Girls Club started a little bit later. I know it's very tough and I know as a mom of a five-year-old, getting a child into summer program is competitive. It's like being online for Camp Downer. Can I get the spot? Can I get the spot? So by the time we were able to get Boys and Girls Club, a number of families had already secured spots elsewhere, for example, in Rutland City. So in order to come to summer school, they struggled because they needed to, they already paid for their slot somewhere else. And so I think, I agree with what Abby said. I would like to say we have Boys and Girls Club this summer because oftentimes they could drop them off in the morning. And let's say they only need to come for math. I don't want them to sit through Summer Academy for reading, writing, and math just because mom or dad can't pick them up until noon or somebody else.
Or the bus.
Or the bus. So I think what in years past, we had higher attendance prior to COVID because then we could say you can go to Tapestry at the time. You know, these are the times we, we need to offer you Summer Academy and then it's just ebbs and flows.
So in other words, you really haven't heard a lot of people saying that it's, we don't have a way to get there.
Yeah. I mean, I can think of a couple of parents that said, I cannot get my child there. And a couple that said, you know, I already secured a spot in the, a summer camp in the city, for example, and I can't go back and forth. But again, a lot has happened since May. So I could be missing some families. So if you would like me to survey, but I thought you, we were going to find out what the cost would be and if the board.
Well, we found the cost.
Okay.
Yeah. So I guess it doesn't hurt, maybe just, I don't know. What does the board think?
I think we should just table it.
Table it for next year. Okay. So never mind.
So when, I have an idea. What if when we give recommendations for Summer Academy, if we could maybe have a checkbox on there that says if transportation is a reason you're unable to have your child attend, please let us know, just so we can say, you know, unfortunately, we don't have it at this time, but we're trying to just keep track of those students.
Or maybe if there's only three or four, we could use our van without any extra issue.
But I think if you offer it for one, we have to offer it for everybody.
But if you're saying if there's a problem, if there only ends up being three or four, I'm saying, would you do that?
Yeah, I would, I would not suggest that because if, then I would be like, well, I want my kid picked up out of van. I think if you offer it for some, it should be offered to all.
You got to use a bus.
Correct.
And, and logistically speaking, I think that price goes up. They're thinking one bus run means the current bus run. We don't know where these kids are. If there's 10 kids and they're going all over Rutland Town and then coming back and forth, they're going to adjust then. It just doesn't seem logistically like this is a great.
All right. So let's move on.
So do you want me, or do you want to just revisit that later?
Let's just revisit it later.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. All right. Any other budget discussion items?
I do have a question. It was, somebody had brought up, I don't know if this goes on the budget, but it might, that there is a bus that runs for Long Trail.
Yes.
Is there a bus that runs to any other school, like Burn Burton or whatnot? And how does that happen if they're? We have multiple families looking at Burn Burton next year, I guess.
So I had, in years past, Burn Burton had told me, don't ask me when, if we have enough kids going, we could offer a bus, the pickup and drop off would be at the old mall. So this was eight, nine years ago. And then Long Trail, they offer busing because they just ask if they can use our parking lot because a number of kids get dropped off here, not just from Rutland Town. And so the, they come at seven and, I'm trying to think what time, 4:30?
I think 6:30.
You're that late that often?
No, 6:30 in the morning.
Oh, it's 6:30 in the morning. Okay, I thought it was.
So is that not a, not a budget thing that we don't?
That's the private schools, they pay for it. And they say, we offer transportation. So some of the kids that go to Long Trail, I know they're not just Rutland Town kids. There's a few here in the evening, but there's a number of kids that are from all over.
And just to clarify, we are not providing transportation, except Long Trail is providing.
Okay, that's what I.
To clarify that.
Yeah. I wasn't sure if that was a budget thing, so I wanted to make sure that.
No, we don't provide transportation for 9 through 12.
We do not. Perfect. All right. I just want to make sure I answered people correctly.
Yes.
All right. So next month, Louis will be here to discuss the draft of the budget and that'll include all of Sarah and Mike's priorities. And he'll try to include ours that we come up with by the end of the meeting tonight. So if anyone doesn't, Colin?
I'm good.
Okay, your hand's still up.
I'm stretching.
Oh, okay. Got it.
So Tina, all those items you listed will be in the budget. Louis had already met.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. All right. So let's move on to second floor update. So.
Sure. So you, at the last board meeting, the board had asked me to reach out to Ed Clark from MBF Architects, do we use the acronym, regarding the sprinkler protection of the second floor. And so Ed reached back out, he did some more research and found that the, that the second floor space would be in the need of sprinkler protection as well as potentially part of the first floor as well, particularly in the footprint. And so he estimated that would be close to an additional $200,000 cost to the budget. So, which, which to be honest, makes sense to me. I was kind of surprised initially when they said that there was no sprinkler protection, particularly in a place where we're out, you know, having students and staff. But looking at the Vermont School Construction Code and reaching back out to Ed, it was clarified that yes, there would be a need for sprinkler protection in that space, particularly if we're looking at occupancy. We would not get a CO without it.
And then Colin, you had done a little research too on some other soft costs. You had done a little research on some of the other soft costs for the second floor.
I think I'm, I think I'd like, maybe, I think.
We can't hear you, Colin.
We just lost him.
Hear me?
Now we can.
Yeah, I think there's some confusion on my end at least coming out of the last meeting that I was expecting Chris to come back and report on the sprinkler system since that was up in the air, as well as I wanted to have all the soft costs by a specific date for us because we have to bring this to ballot. I, if I did volunteer to bring soft costs, I apologize. That's not my value. But potentially, you know, working with and/or some engineering firms or someone who can estimate, like if we're going to get serious about bringing this to the ballot by November, we should have all of these other costs in line to have a pretty good estimate of where we're going to be, including additional electrical, additional utility costs for the space to heat it and see if we can get that as close as we can by, by November. So at least people are prepared for the big number, right?
Colin, would you like Sarah, myself, to meet with Ed or see if we find time to meet with Ed to see if we nail some of those costs down for November's meeting?
Yeah, that would be fantastic. There's some other resources that we can use as well. I mean, and I think Ed's done a great job. I don't think this has been a high priority or fast-paced project for him. Like we need, honestly, if we're going to really get this going by March, we need the answers or at least as close as we can coming into November to say, okay, here's the shell, all the teaching input came back, you know, at least from our standpoint before going to the public, this is the layout that makes sense for what we need, for what Sarah's telling us, Chris is telling us we need for the future. Let's get as many of those.
And I think having Kelly try out part of that conversation, yeah.
Yeah. I think he was mentioned last time too, just to kind of get an idea of what electricity will be and that, those other things too.
And Mike, you're more welcome to join us.
As we said, you know, a real firm, like an additional $4,000, like I know right now, going through the records, that we have a six-inch pipe coming in off of the city water line. Do we have enough capacity to fill, you know, the water hookup? Is that there? Like, let's get a firm number on the sprinkler system, not up approximately. And again, nothing against Ed, but we need to have some more detail in our estimates. Because again, if we miss, we miss bringing this to vote or we don't, we push it out, these numbers are going to go up 10, 12% a year. So want to be as close to soft.
So just confirming, you three, Kelly, we'll talk with Ed.
Sure.
And try to get the, the best estimate we can for November.
Yes.
Thank you very much for doing that.
What was it at?
I think it's at 2,620, something like that. 2,620,000 or so right now with the sprinkler and the original.
And just think other schools are at 1.2 million to change their mascot. Just saying. We don't have to change our mascot. This is about the upstairs. Knock on wood.
Yes.
It's a ram.
What was with stocks? This school like 80 million that they're building or something?
Yeah. Anyone have any last words on that before we move on? All right. So then that brings us to the property land discussion. We, last month, we put the information about what we own in Rutland, or in Northwood Park in the bucket. And just to continue the discussion about the potential of selling that land for fair market value and using that money towards the second floor to help, help offset it. So since we don't know the cost of the second floor at this time, do we want to table that discussion till next time again?
Is there any way we can get a, a cost of what?
What is a fair market value?
Yeah.
Probably.
That's what, we should, we should know what that is as well.
That would be helpful to know for the discussion.
So that. I don't think we should be landowners if we don't need to be.
Right.
And if we can use that money, if it's earmarked just for this project.
That'll help.
I think that, that would, taxpayers would really like to see that.
Is there a specific part of that parcel of land you'd like us to look at? Because I know that's just one big tract. I mean, so is there?
I think the whole thing.
I don't think we need to own any land. I think we should sell it all.
You think we should sell it all?
What's that?
You said you think we should sell it all?
Yeah.
Once you sell, you lose control what's next year too, so.
I mean, one of the reasons why we had that land years ago is we thought we were going to build a regional high school. That ain't going to happen. I don't think.
Yeah.
Unless you want to shut those other ones down, you better hightail it. I'd be looking for you.
Sarah was looking for me, Jeff.
Unless you want to save a piece for?
I think if you look at the actual land, it makes more sense to sell the whole chunk.
I think you would get more for it anyway.
All right. So is that something that you're going to?
I'll work with Louis to see.
There's a buyer.
Well, ideally, it would be nice to have the, since the town of Rutland, or Rutland Town owns it, it would be nice to, hopefully they would be willing to buy it too, but we'll see. All right. Lifetime sports. Where are we in that conversation? I will defer to our lifetime sports chairs. Abby and Colin.
Colin?
So this, I do remember saying I would do stuff.
I remember the same, Colin. It's like, I don't remember any soft costs, so.
So we've, with the help of Mr. Snyder, Lundy Harris, we got a survey off the ground, preliminarily, the entire school. Hold on a second, I'm just going to pull over so I don't.
A few times.
Service.
I got that survey like three times.
We were told you had sent me that.
No, originally went out from five through eight and then we did three K. So the whole school has been sent the survey, inquiring about various sports. So to date, we've gotten 168 surveys back, but some of those were duplicates. So we, and as of this morning, I had 159 different individual answers. So, and I believe we're at 351, Sarah, is that correct?
352.
352. So we are not quite at 50% as far as getting results back. As of right now, we gave the option of skiing, Alpine skiing at Pyco, and then had a various list of questions, if you need the beginner lessons, as well as do you have equipment? Does your kid, can your child ski? Would they ski with a chaperone? So we had a whole bunch of questions attached if they were, if they wanted interest in the Alpine. If they didn't, then there was ice skating. Then we also had a snow shoeing cross-country option, as well as the third is kind of our hodgepodge of weightlifting, maybe rock climbing, bowling, kind of a, a whole bunch of various ideas, mostly indoor, just giving some folks some different options. So of the 159 individual surveys, we got 75% have come back Alpine skiing, which and that split as of right now is about 72, it's about 50/52 of kids needing beginner instruction and kids that could ski on their own with parental or chaperone guidance at Pyco. So overwhelmingly, people are selecting the Alpine option. We had lots in Colin from Getcha, we have costs from the mountain. Now we're just, I'd like to take one more week and really get, at this point, potentially either push it back out to the parents and/or go to the kids individually. I, I'm going to guesstimate some of the kids that were not getting surveys back from, one that I'm most importantly trying to get a hold of, the kids that won't have these opportunities. So if we don't have parental surveys back, because we have all the data of who's answered and what, I'd like, I don't know if I need permission or at least have teachers or a staff member asking children what they're interested in, because I want to get as many of the 352 individual answers as we can so that we can take the next three weeks and lay out a budget and where kids need to be, where they want to be. Some areas of concern we have is, again, we only had 50 slots at Pyco for the all-inclusive beginner lesson from a Pyco instructor, Pyco instructor. We're at 22 of all that right now, again, with 159 to 351, and a trend of 75% going Alpine and get all of the answers. We're most likely going to have a lot of kids looking to ski and not having that level of beginner instruction from the mountain available to us, at which point we're going to need to make some decisions as far as prioritizing for a level and/or lottery for those slots. But we certainly have a lot of parental support, people who skate, ski, cross-country. We certainly have a lot of volunteers that said they're willing to help, that have experience for the kids who don't need beginner instruction in any of these fields to get out there and work with our kids. So, you know, that's very positive. We've got really, a really quick positive response from the surveys from people I honestly expected would jump on it quickly, but a really good positive response. A lot of people want to be involved to help get equipment. So in a really short period of time, in a month, we've gotten a lot of great positive feedback. We can get a budget going and kind of a layout, but it's really going to be jockeying around. How do we pull off skiing? And then how do we prioritize if you don't have those, above those 50 slots of beginners? How do we randomize or prioritize what kids, and not kids specifically. How do we randomize or prioritize what kids, and not kids specifically, what grade levels we want to target first? And we have to advertise that across the past, but I'll pause there and look for comment questions.
So I think ideally, I guess the question is, is it tenable to have this year with making sure everybody's outfitted in it, right? With skis and winter gear? And then secondly, we really, I think, need the number of, so this year, we're kind of late in the game, so we have a limited amount of space at Pyco. But if we were earlier, would we have more spaces? Do you know?
I don't think so. I think they give, each school gets 50 slots, I think is usually what they're, or for skiers, I think that's what. That seems to be what they're, you know, because so many schools around here want to do it, so I think they kind of cap it off at 50. So I'm thinking that that's, no matter how early we got in there.
So...
Do you know that, Colin? Do they cap it for everyone at 50?
They're not capping everyone, but there's a certain amount of instruction they have, they'll...
Gotcha, for staffing, yeah.
It's a staff issue, possibly an equipment issue as well, we're talking about a rest check, they have a lot of capacity. Really, it's going to come down to instructional, beginner instructional level. Again, wanting, if we want to utilize, which I think is probably rude, utilizing a Pyco Killington instructor, potentially, if we have the numbers flowing into a 2024 year, we can communicate with them a little bit better along with, hey, we had 150 kids last year, we're anticipating we're going to have 100. If they can probably line that up, but they're just putting the other package of what they have, they're not going to add staff at this point. It's a really good deal, so it's not money makers for them per se, it is getting kids involved, so it's a great community environment. But I think we could have a lot more wiggle room. Once we're established a year and a two, two years in, say, hey, we could system the 100 spots, we can probably get that filled. But right now, you know, it's still up in the, we were just, we were doing guesswork, talking to them on the phone until we got these surveys back. And they're not, it's tough for them to staff up for across the town, Thursday afternoon, having extra instructors that don't get in and work the rest of the week. So I think we're going to be there, but there's potentially, you know, again, there's a lot of parental volunteers out there where we could build this out robustly.
And they would all need background checks and all that, right? These volunteers?
Yes. A lot of them, a lot of them, a lot of these parents are already involved in Pycos club or teaching, coaching in some capacity. Maybe not necessarily had a background check, but they have, we're not, it's not just, you know, and certainly there's parents that ski with their kids, think that would be very comfortable taking four or five more of their child's friend out there. So I think, you know, there's plenty of room for this thing to grow and do very, very well and have a nice Pyco after. And again, I'm not trying to focus just on the skiing, but that seems to be an overwhelming response to the surveys and to end the parents down here being like, hey, that's great. You know, I've never been able to bring my kid up there looking at that, so.
So do we have a cost of what this will be so that Louis could put in the budget for next year, so we can discuss that?
Yeah, again, I need, I need to get, I need to pry more data as much as we can from the kids and then the next week, kids and parents the next week. The rest we can piece together in spreadsheet format, because again, we have the 50 slots at 129, so that's an easy budget, right? And we've already hit that, the boston's easy. The rest is, okay, we have, the survey is pretty in-depth as far as kids who need gear, kids who don't need gear, kids who need passes, there's deals for them to chew with us. There's also outlets that they're giving us to say, hey, we have parent passes that we can offer you guys at a discount, even though we're past some of these dates through the school, not necessarily the school pay for it, but the parents can buy these passes, they give their kids passes. So taking the data that I have and say, okay, we have another, you know, we had 100, basically, we had 140 kids say they want to ski. Like a majority of the survey, so, but not all of them need stuff. So now we'll influence the budget here and there, and then we can come back to the board and say, okay, do we want to subsidize passes? I can build it all together, so I have a pretty, pretty pinpointed financial model that we're going to discuss. But we're going to try to, I'll try to get through that at a committee level, so we're not, that's about an entire board.
Because I think we have to decide if we're going, how we're going to pay for it this year, right? And then also have that number for the budget for next year.
Yeah, I thought, well, from my recollection of the last meeting, Tina, you said you were going to sponsor half of it personally?
I do not recollect that.
Good thing he's on the phone.
Yeah.
I know, but yeah, yes, absolutely. And that, that was the whole part of, kind of randomly putting it together, like, okay, let's get what people want to do, and then we can back and build the survey. But then, on boards, or backfill the budget, but I know, I might also try to get out in front of the state, you know, I think if we get, come up with a consistent program of, you know, a budget and maybe what's realistic on our end is to, hey, we can offer these 50 slots for four through six, or, you know, using some, we're using some of the guidance of Killington, of Pyco, of parents that are instructors, like, say, where's the biggest bank or your buck or kid that should have exposure to skiing? So all of that comes into place, that's a little bit of a new target, but yeah, we'll be able to pinpoint that, and then green light it or not.
Sarah, did you get an email back from Georgette by any chance? You didn't get an email?
No, I checked my spam every couple of days too.
I filled out a request to rent Georgette to see what their price would look like for between 50 and 60 kids. But I put it in your name, so you would get the email.
Nope, didn't get anything, I just searched again.
So Colin, should we expect like a report and ready to vote on it next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. And I guess if you know about what it is beforehand, if you give it to Louis, he can build it in the budget for the following, so he can see what that looks like.
Absolutely, that's, you know, again, I'm really just trying to get as much parental student feedback as we can to make it, because I can responsibly get people where they want to be doing stuff. That, but to be blunt too, like, hey, if you're renting, the more kids that want to go skate, it's way cheaper and it's fun. But, you know, five dollars a student a session at Spartan. But I get it, so, don't let that take advantage, but again, each thing different.
Well, thank you. I think we'll move on for now, just light of the time. So next up, we have the Visbit and Beehive Proxy. So I think as of last meeting, Colin, you had planned on going, since that time, I'm also going, so have you made your plans yet? Did you want to continue? Did you want to continue to be the proxy?
Oh yeah, I got a room, so I'm up there.
Okay, so then Colin would still be the proxy, because I think we voted on that last time.
Right, we just need to fill the form.
So he needs to fill this out?
I did register as well, so.
You can fill out the bottom.
Him?
You can, you can fill out the bottom.
I could fill it out, okay.
So just, yeah.
Okay.
You can authorize that that's your appointment.
Okay, perfect, great, well, thank you for doing that. Also in the...
I am registered, so yeah.
So Tina, Colin will just have to have those documents when he shows up, because he has to submit those, so let's find a place to pick them up, or we can just bring them up to the meeting and give them to him there, so.
Perfect. There's some special papers that you need to have in order to be the proxy. So between Chris and I, we'll make sure you get them.
Absolutely.
All right, so moving on to the V S B A resolution, so one of the jobs Colin will have is to vote on our behalf on the resolutions at the V S B A annual meeting. They're in the packet, I don't know, any of you had a chance to kind of peek at them? I'm just bringing them up on mine here. Does anyone have any thoughts about them? A lot of the motions, or resolutions, I should say, were the committee and the board both agreed on how they wanted to vote on it. There were a few that there was a little disagreement between the board and the committee. One of which was the non-residential tax rate equal to homestead tax rate, which is number four. The other one was the restraint and seclusion resolution, number eight.
I don't think it was in our packet, right?
It's online.
Yeah, I did.
It's very long, so we didn't print it out, but it's in the bucket online. And then number nine, the remote school board meetings.
What was the remote one? I don't think I saw that one.
So number nine. Basically, it was asking the General Assembly to amend Vermont's open meeting law to make fully remote meetings a permanent voluntary option. So the Resolutions Committee recommended to not pass it, and the V S B A Board wanted it passed as a regular resolution, so that one was quite...
Which means the public can...
So what that does is gives the school board or an acting committee the authority to have, like, we could continue having our hybrid, but let's say a policy committee could stay fully remote, you would not have a, you know, have a person in a physical location, you know, so one person might have to be at a place, while the others could be remote, so hybrid. So I think that's what this resolution is suggesting, that in those situations, fully remote would be okay.
Yeah.
And I don't know why the committee recommended do not pass, because it doesn't give their reasoning.
Yeah, I don't know.
So, I like having the option of having some of the meetings Zoom, especially the committee meetings.
Yes.
I really like having the full board meetings in person as much as possible, but allowing for the hybrid option allows people to join more easily. Just makes it more accessible. So I would go with the board recommendation of passing as a regular resolution for me.
Yeah, man.
I would too.
Okay.
Well, just except Vermont, you know, it just makes sense.
Yeah.
I'm sitting in the car right now, so I'm listening, yeah.
Okay. The other two, there wasn't quite a disagreement between their answers. So does anybody else have any concerns of them?
What was the one, I thought there, wasn't there one about the education fund or something?
Well, the use of surplus education funds, both the committee and the board said do not pass. So is that something you wanted to discuss?
No, I'm fine with that, I just, I wasn't sure what, I thought that was a split decision.
So the other ones were close enough, one was do not pass, or I guess the restraint and seclusion, the committee said do not pass, and the, so maybe we should look at that one. So that was number eight. All right, so in number eight, which is, the topic is restraint and seclusion. "The V S B A calls on the General Assembly to prohibit the use of restraint and seclusion in any learning environment that receives public funds from the state of Vermont, except when there is a threat of imminent danger of serious fiscal harm to the students or others, and when it occurs in a manner that protects the safety of all children. Further, the V S B A calls for thorough data reporting requirements that would provide student demographic information in the development and implementation of statewide technical assistance to promote positive development of youth through evidence-based, developmentally appropriate programs. Technical assistance should address consistent and accurate reporting to include demographic information." So the Resolutions Committee recommended not to pass it, and the V S B A Board recommended to pass it.
What are your thoughts, Abby?
I'll go to the experts.
Yes.
Just look right over here.
I mean, what's that, does it catch the demograph, demographic data that they're...
I think that's the...
In their research, I do believe they're just looking to tighten up the use, I know they're, like I said, real 4500 is pretty restrictive, you know, but I think there are concerns with restraints being used in schools and for what situations, and so I think they're... My take on this is that they're looking to tighten things up a little bit and just put some tighter restrictions and a little more formal reporting around. If you use a restraint, exclusion, you have to really be able to justify that there was a threat or imminent danger, that it was not just a student was dysregulated, but was not a threat or danger, and I think that's, you know, I do believe in our schools that people have been very cautious to use their restraints and exclusions, but I have also heard in other situations, other school districts, where there's a more liberal application of restraint and exclusion. So my, that, I think that's what they're trying to do, is tighten it up, but, you know, the devil's in the details, you don't really know what this looks like without seeing the full language, because I know, and Abby could probably talk a little more, that it might become so restrictive that, you know, people are afraid to use this and may cause potentially a more harmful situation as well, so.
Absolutely.
So.
Yeah, I'm on the fence on this one. I just, I think they have tightened up their, I mean, each year, we get a new form to fill out, and each year, there's more information to put on it. If they're just looking for more background information and background of what we've tried in the past, I just get nervous when it says to restrict it or prohibit it, you know, in all learning environments, I just, I worry that, like you said, Chris, that it could potentially create a, an environment where staff are nervous.
And students.
And, you know, that we're, we are slower to react to a situation that would have been taken care of, you know, not taken care of, but de-escalated quicker. And, but I don't know if there's enough information to say either way on this one for me, would have to know what their, their exact are, like, what.
I mean, I'll defer only because, like, we also look, this school board, we're looking at through the scope of like pre-K through eight, right? So you think about like the high school level where it's basically adults in that room that might need restraint or something like that, right?
You know, Tim, I, and Abby could talk more about this, but I've seen some, you know, younger children, you know, once the adrenaline flows, it's going to be just as difficult as, you know, a larger size, I think it really depends on the situation, you know. And there are restrictions obviously on heights, and, you know, but, you know, restraint in schools is something which is a last resort. You know, I think that's something which, you know, our staff, our CPI train, they talk about, you know, this is the last thing you want to do, and it's only, they say, when there is that threat of harm to themselves or to others. But it's difficult just to see this resolution when you really don't see the full scope of really, or the intent of this language, and I think that's where.
The other, the other portion that I, that, when it says, said somewhere, something about the threat to the community as a whole, the school community as a whole. And the other thing, like with our SU, that, not everybody's trained, so it's Crays' team, so it's not like we're just training people willy-nilly in this. There's a select few that are trained to use it if needed. And I think a lot of schools are going that way, that there are only a select few people are being trained.
You know, I do think if you would look at the, there is a letter link there, but I think part of it is, if you look at the last paragraph, does, it does talk about being unnecessarily or inappropriately restrained and secluded, I think that's...
Yeah.
The intent behind this is to narrow that scope, so you avoid these unnecessary or inappropriate restraints or seclusions. appropriate restraints or seclusions, or what that, you know, more clearly define. But I think we're, in a school, when you look at threats, you know, danger, harm, imminent danger, there's a lot of subjectivity to that.
Absolutely.
And I think that's part of it, and even when you go to the Court of Law, you know, I've seen, you know, many case law where the judges have ruled that if a student has broken, you know, the student's arm, that, well, that doesn't really meet that definition, so it's such a wide-ranging thing, and I think that's been, one of the issues that we've always had is what, what is an imminent threat, because that is a, you know, to one individual, you know, one person, there's an imminent threat, to another person, though we're okay, we're, so I think that's, you know, that's where you rely on your training, your expertise, and, you know, people maintaining cool heads through this stuff, but...
I also think they were looking at the data reporting, because as it is now, data reporting is only required when there is death, injury, requiring outside medical treatment.
Not anymore. Anytime, you have to fill out a 4500.
So, that's what this is saying.
I just also had a question. It says...
So, that's not true or accurate?
Anytime a restraint or exclusion is used...
They even changed it, so like, back when I first started in Vermont, it was, like, if you did a transport, like, if I needed to get a, just to get a kid out of the classroom, like, I didn't have to fill out anything, but any momentary restriction of a student's, of their movement, is now you fill out a 4500, so it's...
Even if it's less than 30 minutes?
Oh, oh, yeah, like, I mean...
That's not what this says here.
Even now, you have...
Yeah, yeah, so it's like, I mean...
So, I think in light of there being inaccurate information in this to begin with, we can't pass that either.
No, because, yeah, because it does say right here, it says, "Data reporting is only required when there's death, injury, restraint, medical hospitalization."
So, that's not correct.
More than 30 minutes, yeah, so that's all, that's all, that's all new language, I mean, even over the past, this is old.
That's old.
This is really old.
Yeah.
Because...
So, I, yeah. So, it sounds like they're already doing that, so it's kind of new. Did you have a comment, Colin, before we move on?
Well, yeah, are we gonna vote on all this stuff, because this one particularly, I'm gonna need some direction out of this one.
Yes, so...
I don't like, I don't like any additional restrictive language towards our teachers, towards our staff. We don't seem to have an issue. The whole language itself contradicts itself, that you're prohibited from using it unless there's imminent danger, which I'd assume...
Which is why they're using it. Yeah.
There's imminent danger, that's when you can act.
Yeah, no, I think that this is a superficial...
But the crazy is just create a layer of more policing within, within their kitchen.
All right, so, Colin, what would your vote be?
Standing up, but I need to guessfully, and I disagree with it.
Okay, Tim?
Yeah, I'm gonna go with a no on that.
To vote it down.
Yeah.
I mean, I just don't think it's updated.
Yeah.
To what, it's not anything to what we're...
Where you're already doing it.
It's old. This is super old, for what the 4500 regulations are now. I mean, they just came out with new ones.
This year.
Like, like September, right?
Right.
So, I would have to say on this aspect of it, you couldn't...
It's not, yeah.
It's not.
It's already better than it says it's there.
A hundred percent better.
So, I say leave it. Do not pass. All right, so, we're unanimous for do not pass. Colin? And number nine, we were unanimous for pass.
Great, well, I mean, I guess, I guess...
I can write you something, Colin.
Go through all of them real quick.
Okay, so, number one, all right, so, this is all gonna be...
I mean, for every item, I'm gonna proxy the votes. I wanna know who the votes are.
Right, so, for all, there was only one other one, the non-residential tax rate equal to the homestead tax rate, number four, that there was a disagreement between the committee and the board. So, in that one, the V S B A calls upon the General Assembly to examine the impact and feasibility of raising the non-residential tax rate to the same rate as the homestead tax rate in every town where the non-residential tax rate is lower than the homestead tax rate. So, basically, it's calling on the General Assembly to form a task force to do a study. It's not really doing, it's not changing a law or doing anything else, it's just asking them to do that. And the committee said, "Take no action," and the V S B A Board said, "Do not pass." I feel like they have a lot of other things going on. I don't know. I don't know enough about all that stuff, I guess. Oh, yeah, the non-residential is someone that has, like, a second home.
Yeah.
So... I don't know. I'm not, I'm fine not taking any action or do not passing, so I'd go with either one.
I almost feel like no action. I'm not, it seems like more of...
It seems like extra work.
More of a concern for this one.
For some towns, I don't think that's, it's a big concern for ours.
Yeah.
I don't think we have a whole lot of second homes in Rutland Town. I think it's more...
What was it asking?
Where the homestead tax rate was higher than, like, a second homeowner's tax rate, like, a non-residential, increasing the non-residential tax rate to meet the homestead tax rate. Having a, having a task force look at the impact of that.
All right, so it's like, that's not even in our purview, but, okay, have the task force look at it.
No action.
Right.
No action.
So, we're just saying no action.
That's fine.
We're not against it, but we're not gung-ho for it either.
When I have my second home, I'm gonna have a...
A different thought?
Personally, I'll take some action, but I'll give that a home.
So, all the other resolutions were, there was an agreement between, so unless any of the board members had any concerns going against that, which I do not, I'm okay agreeing with them otherwise.
Yep.
Is that Jeff's on board? Abby's on board? Tim's on board? All right, so, so basically, we're going to vote with everybody, except for the few that we already teased out, that there was disagreement between. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for doing that for us. All right, moving on. Student enrollment impact. I think we're talking a little bit about the numbers and how we have a lot of new students this year, so we just wanted to get an update on how things are going.
Yeah, so, in the principals' report, I had, in the template that principals were given, I list the enrollment there, so you can see our class sizes. I think I shared last board meeting, you know, we have three tuition students currently in our, we may have four, in our seventh grade class, which is great, and then we had a number of students enroll that are, that are homeless throughout the year. And due to the homeless situation, it's definitely impacted Rutland Town significantly. There are kids, our teachers are amazing, from counselors, nurses, I mean, you name it, they're our kids, they're well taken care of, this is the best place for them to be, but some of our students, for a variety of reasons, just need a lot of support, and we've been down a special educator. We unfortunately had the resignation of our P F S assistant, and we have some kids that require a lot of support, and it's been draining our resources as well as just physically, emotionally. It's been a lot. So, I think, yeah, our class sizes specifically for the seventh grader at 52. So, that's, you know, we've had larger numbers in the past, so some of those students varies, you know, in our P E, some of our specials classes, they will be at that 26, but sometimes kids get pulled out at various times during the day, so it's not across the board.
That seventh grade class started high, when they were in kindergarten, there was a lot.
Yeah. Yeah, and then, it seems that, this happened a number of years ago with a fifth grade class, I remember. I was like, "No more fifth graders, no more fifth graders," then Mrs. Mock's like, "We have twins, fifth grade, just register." I was like, "Oh, my gosh." So, like I said, you know, thinking back, maybe I wouldn't have recruited and sold our school so much to some of these tuition students, specifically for this class, and I know that the board had allowed another family to come in that hadn't quite moved in here yet, that was another seventh grade student. But again, it's a great class, I'm glad that they were able to go to Chincha Cook and Bond, and the class behind them is a lot smaller.
Yeah. Anything that you can think of that, resources-wise, that would be helpful to you?
I mean, I just think our, I did meet with our seventh and eighth grade teachers during a P L C meeting and asked for their input, and they were amazing. They just said, "These are our kids, this is the best place for them, what do they need?" And I think I mentioned a couple meetings ago, the parents that have just noticed we have the change in demographic and need here, that have dropped off clothes, provided snacks. I mean, we had our family school coordinator buying more things today, not from our local budget, but just, we're taking care of our kids. And they, you know, I said, "What would you like? What are you thinking?" And, you know, the teachers just said, "I think for now, let's keep our schedule and our classes as is, and if things significantly increase, then let's look at the schedule and some possible changes, but to disrupt the entire middle school at this time of the year, I don't think would be good for any, any kids or teachers." So, you know, I was gonna touch base with them after Halloween and see what the numbers are. We anticipate a couple of kids moving, but who knows? We thought a student was moving today, and they're now moving in two weeks, so we're gonna see what the numbers look like for soon November.
Is there a place in the budget for resources for teachers to help these kids?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I told teachers that, I said, "Just let me know." We, Bill Basic has been huge help, there are homeless funds, so he's worked with Tracy Sabaka, our family school coordinator, to provide items that are needed for families through that, but I think you'd probably ask any teacher at any school, my husband's like, "What else is on that Amazon cart?" It's just kind of what, what we do, it's just, they're our kids and we take care of them, so yes, they're, and I've reminded teachers of that, you know, whether Mike and I will buy it, or it'll come out of our budget, or through the homeless funds that Bill Basic has been able to help us out with, there are funds available, and I think it's just, you know, it's that saying that who's having a tough time right now, literally everyone, so it's that, the lack of mental health services, the lack of counseling for kids, you know, just, just, it's not there for all kids, so that's the tough part. But the good thing is, they have breakfast, lunch, they have rock star teachers, they are loved and cared for when they're here, so, like I said, this is the best place for them to be, and we're just keeping a close eye on those numbers. And I told Pam not to accept any more registration packets for seventh grade.
Everybody's doing an outstanding job.
Thank you.
Taking care of them people.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would agree.
Thank you for sharing.
Mm-hmm.
All right, Director's Orders. I need a motion to approve those.
I'll second that motion.
You'll make the motion?
Make it, yep.
Thank you, Abby.
Make it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, approval of the minutes from September 12?
Make a motion to approve?
Thank you, Jeff. Any changes? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Superintendent's Report.
Thanks, Tina. I'll be quick since it's getting late.
A little late, yeah.
So, I just have, excuse me, two items to review, and Sarah will probably touch upon these as well during her report. So, we have finished the Fast Bridge assessments, I think it was September 29th was the last data testing window. At the next board meeting in November, we will be discussing data, so I'll be working with Mike and Sarah and Al before he departs on getting some data ready for the board, you know, talk about where we're at, how we're doing, and what the next steps are at. So, I'll have more information there, but I think also Sarah and Mike can talk a little more about the Fast Bridge assessments, about some things they've seen, and just how well things have been going, you know, as compared to MAP, you know, as we make that adjustment away. The second thing I want to bring up is just around the strategic plan. On October 1st, I did send out a copy to all community members, board members. In the board, our shared board, you know, folder, I did update a high-resolution, or upload a high-resolution copy of the strategic plan. I did receive a lot of nice compliments and feedback from families about the plan. I know that I've seen already this year, as I've met with, you know, Sarah and the other building admins, look at professional development, you know, just this past Friday, you know, the SU-wide in service, it's nice to see an alignment in terms of goals and resources that has been absent. I know we've been dealing with COVID and other situations, but we really are starting to really kind of align our, our resources, our vision, our focus across our schools, but there still is that responsiveness, well, you know, Sarah's still responsive, you know, Rutland Town's needs, and, like I said, the strategic plan does provide that flexibility for schools to take a responsive approach, so... And, yeah, so, and I know that next week we do have, now, October 26th, 27th is the V S B A, V S A. I do want to make note that the fall business meeting, there is an option to attend online, so if you're not going up to Lake Maury, you can, you know, register online, so, you know, just see what it's about, and just support Colin and his votes, so... I'll just leave it at that for right now. Any questions?
I do have a question.
Yes.
I see that you have the dates for the data reports for the G R C S U board. Will we be getting those reports at this board?
So, yes, so our goal is, this was given to the G R C S U, we anticipate that the local boards will receive during the same month. So, while, like, November 7th is the G R C S U, the following week, then, you know, here at Rutland Town, we'll also be just discussing Fast Bridge and...
Can we add your, I don't know if this is available, but the Sabers for Rutland Town, just to see, or whatever you guys are doing?
So, yeah, I'll talk to Sarah to see if that's the one which we can have for November or December. I'll talk to see.
I would just like to see that data.
Yep, yep. Sarah, any thoughts on Sabers?
Sure. We're finishing at, I put October 14th, but isn't that Saturday?
Yeah.
Yeah, that is.
So, I meant the 13th.
So, we'll try to have that information for November, if we have to, we can push it back to December, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's fine.
Does the board also wanna see the behavior report like we did last year? Or, how has that been from your standpoint? Has that been similar to last year? Has there been changes?
Um, I think this year, we've definitely seen an increase in H H B, specifically around harassment.
Really?
Yeah, so, working with Mike on, on how to work with families, with students, to, not only the restorative approach, but also just some education around, I think some students may say some comments not realizing what that means in regards to the policy. So, we're working, we're working on addressing that. We're doing some circles with eighth graders tomorrow, so we had a circle training over the summer that was offered for free, thanks to Alderman Chevrolet, and we had a high number of Rutland Towns, it was open to all schools within G R C S U and beyond, but we had a lot of Rutland Town teachers that attended, including myself and Mike, so those of us that attended, we're gonna lead some circles tomorrow, just to address some disrespect, and just, we want our kids to be engaged and active learners, and we kinda wanna nip it now, that we're seeing. We don't want the eighth gradeitis to start in September, it's in October. So, I think it's going well. Again, we're, I'm gonna miss Al, you know, full disclosure, I do not know how to pull a lot of those reports, that's, that was his thing, and I enjoyed meeting with him and kinda geeking out over data, and I appreciated him not having a... And I appreciated him not having originally an educational background, because he asked some really good questions, just some honest questions about data. So, I, I, Mike and I do not know how to pull those reports, as Al did for you. That's something that we need to learn how to do. But I think definitely had some new kids enroll with some, some strong behaviors, as we do every year. And especially just, you know, again, change in demographic, and some of the H H Bs, we have seen an increase specifically around harassment. But we're educating parents, kids, and teachers, and doing our thing.
I think for me, the day-to-day behavior is not as important as that Sabers behavior. I think that, I mean, that shares a very good wealth of knowledge between, that I would, you know, think is important.
Okay. So, thank you for that update, and I, I'd like to hear, I don't think I need to see, but I think I'd like to hear how things are going.
Yeah.
When, you know, after you've done the circles, and how you found that and that kind of thing.
Yeah.
It's good to hear.
And I will say, when those, you know, I've said this before to Mike, I'm like, there's really not a lot of H H Bs here. And then we've had like four investigations within six weeks of school, which just take a tremendous amount of time, a tremendous amount of time. And really, it's, doesn't mean kids are good or bad, it just means that they maybe violated a policy, and we have some work to do in educating the child and the parent.
Are they more on primary or middle?
Middle.
Middle, okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. So, I think that leads to the principal's report.
Sure. So, you fly, Ms. Q, again, talked about O G, but she shared, we're piloting that kindergarten through second grade here at Rutland Town. That's going great. Mike and I've enjoyed being in some classrooms to observe that. Sabers testing will be completed this week. Thanks to Mike and Principal McLemore from Proctor, who offered the Midway Math, and Mike organized all of that. That was paid for through S R enrichment funds. During that time, Mike also organized, which was great, the bi-annual bus evacuation. So, we hit two birds with one stone. Mike went with some of the older kids, and I went with some of the younger kids. We both were able to attend that field trip. Thanks to Superintendent Self for Hillary Lambert, him and Lewis had, were able to pay for that through S R enrichment funds. So, she will be teaching about healthy foods in all preschool through fourth-grade classrooms, and that will start next week. Officer Angie reviewed with our staff our school evacuation procedures that will take place on October 20th for our all-school evacuation. Met with our, and I'm just going to not read word-for-word, I apologize with the time, met with our leadership team this month. Student council elections took place. Student council's busy working on some fall activities from, you know, the pumpkin contest, dance themes for Red Ribbon Week, the community fundraiser stuff of us. Ms. Manaville is working with fifth and sixth-grade T A ambassadors for monthly, for monthly student assembly, for character traits. Mike's done a great job leading our E S T team, discussing data. Progress notifications were emailed to families for jump rope last week. Vic cap reports were emailed last week. Fast Bridge assessments will be emailed this week to families. This P L C, teachers will have time to review that, those results. Asbestos report was completed. HVAC maintenance and boiler cleaning will happen later this month. And then I just have a number of happening celebrations and upcoming events that are listed there. I won't read through all of them. Challenges, we continue to be short-staffed. We are in desperate need of substitutes and long-term subs. We are like five people short almost every day. We need a custodian. We are looking for two pair educators. We need a first and second grade long-term sub. We're still looking for a special educator. Anybody out there who wants to sub, even if it's just one day, please contact Ellen Coyle. That's been one of the biggest struggles. And, you know, just shifting stuff around. And then I listed the enrollment there.
So, I had a couple of questions.
Sure.
I know that the A D A doors were supposed to be done this summer. I know that we're waiting for a part, but I was curious if we heard about when the part is due, and...
A part just came in. It'll be installed after HVAC cleaning and filter replacement. So, I don't have a date, but I asked Kelly that today.
Okay. And he said that that would be completed by the end of October, so it should be by the next meeting.
Probably, yes. He, he took his first vacation ever and just got back on Thursday, so.
Good for him.
He's been busy.
And then, I believe that we were supposed to have the PCB testing done last week. Was it done?
Saturday they were here.
So, it was done?
Friday and Saturday, yes.
Okay.
So, I spoke with the state. We probably will not get the results till right around Thanksgiving, a little after Thanksgiving.
I was just curious if they actually came.
So, just so you know, that's just with the timing, but so.
Okay, thank you. And then, I, this is maybe more of a Chris S U question, but those progress report emails are, I love that we get them, and they really help remind you, oh, I can look at the grades. But when I get them in the high school, and they use jump rope as well, I can click on the link, and it brings me to the PDF. So, I don't have to log into my kid's jump rope at all. Is that possible? Because it would just make it like one step easier. I, I don't know, I don't know what the difference is.
Actually, I think it's better, because I think it refreshes people to actually log in.
Go in, that's what we want them to do.
To actually go into, because some people have never even gone into jump rope. So, I'll talk with Greg to see what the...
Well, maybe, maybe we don't want to for that reason, that's fine.
No, I, I, you know, we're, we're trying to draw, drive people into jump rope.
Check your kids' grades, yeah.
There are a lot of our families who, we, we look at the data, have never logged in, may not even have their login information. So, we're not trying to prevent someone from that. But I'll talk to Greg to see what the capabilities are.
Yeah, because it's just a little easier, because it, when you only have two minutes, and you don't have it saved on a device, but you have that link right in your email, you can access the page without having to log into something, it's a lot quicker. But I, I hear what you're saying.
And one of the things with jump rope is that if a parent can access their child's grades at any time, 24/7, so it's not as if...
It's nice.
It is nice that, hey, just a reminder, here's kind of where we're at, but, so, parents really should be, you know, but, you know, the reality is...
There's an app. You can download the app.
So, I'll, I'll speak with Greg about, about that, to see if that is an option, what that would take.
I, I don't know if we want to do it, like you said, but, you know, if you bring everybody to log in.
It might just be something on the backend, in terms of, as you, you know, like a generator report, that's, it's maybe like a little formula line there to include. I, I don't know.
And is it, do you get one for both of your kids at the high school? So, you're not, okay. I don't know if it was that.
Yeah, it just brings me right to their current grades. So, I can't, like, see, I, I just get the current final grade. I don't get like all the little...
Oh, yeah, we like all the little.
Well, I, I can get it by logging into their jump rope. But when I'm in a rush, and I just want to, you know, I'm going here, there, and everywhere, it's nice just having that summary.
Got it.
So, I can have that quick conversation without having to dive deeper sometimes. It's just, it's nice having both.
I got just, just a question on the H V A C systems. Just a question maybe for Kelly. Does he have a program for, set up for duck cleaning? Cleaning of the duck work?
I'm sure, but I, that is not my area of expertise, so I would need to ask.
Okay, I just...
Okay, so...
I know, that's important to...
Can you just say that again? I just want to make sure I get all the...
The H, the H V A C systems? Duck cleaning of the systems? Which, what they do with that is they clean the, the inside of the whole unit, like up on...
Yes.
Upstairs? And then they clean the actual duck work, because debris and dust sticks to the inside of the duck work.
So, clarify, there's a program that does this, or a reminder to schedule someone to come in and do the work?
You have to have somebody come in and clean them.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's nothing you can do in-house. It has to be.
Right, right. I just wanted to, yeah, okay.
It's a few small kids.
Send a kid down there?
I'll give you full permission.
Yep.
I asked him, I'm not sure, so I'll get back to the board on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Along with your principal's report, there is a box, a really cool-looking thing right out front, when you walk up. What is out there?
On the grass.
On the grass.
Oh, that is Mrs. McDougal's science class. They're doing...
Oh, cold frames.
Cold frames.
What is, what is in them?
They just started building them today.
They did. And I think the intent is to keep the frost off of plants.
So, they're going to see how the grass looks in that area?
I'm not sure what, she invited me down there today when I was meeting with Chris, so I didn't make it down there. And I'm, she just said, we're building the cold frames. And I was like, awesome, send me an invite. And it was a time that I was meeting, so.
Didn't know if it was like a worm farm or something.
She, she was on earlier.
Okay, sorry.
I'll have to ask her.
Yeah. Ask your kids.
There'll be two. There's that one, and then another one for both sections.
Yeah, and Kelly was helping with that too, I believe.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions for Sarah and Mike? Thank you. All right. Next up, we have contract recommendations. There's one support staff, Ashley Arnold, and six extracurricular for different advisors or mentoring, Marissa, Marissa Neary, Bailey Sanders, Sean DuBois, Catherine Daly, Michael Rowe, and Lorraine Cornell. These are all for information purposes only.
Make a motion to approve?
Well, we don't need to, because it's...
Oh, you don't?
It's just for information, yeah. Because none of them are teaching staff.
Okay.
Is that correct for the extracurricular?
Yeah.
Okay.
You could approach stipends if you want, that's fine, so.
Okay, so, Jeff made the motion to approve a stipend. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Jeff. So, that is not for information only?
It, it is, but the, the boards can still approve a stipend, just for a second, particularly if it says T V D on there, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's not going to hurt to have an extra motion, so.
And I love that there are so many Rutland Town teachers that are willing to help younger or newer staff, and also be advisors. So, thank you. All right.
And that, that includes Ashley's, too?
Yep. So, that, yeah, because her, she's support staff, so that's information only for us, yeah. We're happy to have her. All right. So, vacancies are in your pocket, and Sarah already mentioned all the ones that we're looking for at our school, so. Next up is the board chair report. The S U minutes are in the packet. Does anybody have any questions about that? I think, I think one highlight was, we, the S U increased the substitute pay rate from $15 an hour to $16 an hour with next pay period. So, that was one thing. Next up is the staff and Rutland Town School Board's social. I spoke with Marcia Turner, who surveyed the teachers, and November 1st is a good day for them to have the social after their staff meeting, so I think that would be around 4:15. Does that work for everybody here?
Sure.
November 1st?
I will be coming in all right at 4:15, but I can make it.
What date did you say, Tina?
It's a Wednesday, November 1st, at 4:15. Okay. So, then, we would need to discuss what we wanted to do. Last year, I believe that teachers had money in their budget to do this type of event. This year, they do not, so they are not interested in splitting the costs this year. I believe last year, it cost about $300 for doing hors d'oeuvres that we did, which would come out of our discretionary funds for this type of event. So, I would look, look to do something similar or close to that, again, if that, if the board thought that that would be helpful.
Do it.
That was a good spread. When did we do it last year?
When? It was in the fall sometime, I think. It was, it was either November or December.
I just remember having to get to some, so I was just wondering.
Yeah.
A little earlier.
We did it a little more close to the evening, I feel like.
More at night.
It was like a 5 instead of 4:15. But we're just trying to make it easier, because teachers are just getting out of their meeting, right?
That's good.
All right. So, I, I'll try the same place again, because that seemed to go well.
Where do you want to hold this? Just because we have after-school Boys and Girls Club.
Oh, yeah. Where do you suggest?
Colin's house.
I'm just kidding. The band room? I mean, I don't know, just let Pam and Sheri know, so we can do a facilities request form and get whatever set up, you need set up.
Would the band room or the Mike Rose room be better?
It's completely up to the board.
Well...
Mike Rose's room would probably be better for the tables.
Tables and seats, yeah.
All set up.
Mike Rose?
It's, it used to be the former tapestry room, home ec room. Does that work for everybody?
It's perfect.
All right. So, do you need me to fill out the facility request?
Yeah, yep. That'd be great.
So, I will set that up. And...
You all right, Colin? There you go. He just fell down the stairs.
I know. Are you okay?
Oh, Colin.
It sounded like you fell down the stairs with your phone, anyway.
I thought I was on mute, I was walking down the stairs, I made that.
No worries. All right, I'll make sure I fill it.
Real quick, I did that once, and it doesn't, I'm just throwing it out there. Does it make sense to use this budgetary funds for maybe like another breakfast, we could bring them? I mean, 4:15 is awkward time for hors d'oeuvres. It's not at a cocktail party when people are going home to their kids and stuff like that later on. Just don't know if it adds any value or what. But, I mean, I'm indifferent, just saying.
Well, I think the point is, we wanted to talk to them, so if we did a breakfast, they'd be in class. So, we're trying to get to know them.
No, no, I get that. I mean, I meant just like, bring them in food one day randomly. First was like, how many people are...
That's later in the year.
Teacher appreciation, so.
Yeah. Well, well, this is more like, just having something to nibble on after school while we're chatting.
Chat and chew.
Yeah, chat and chew. That's my thing.
Good one.
I don't know. It worked, it worked. I thought it worked well last year when we did it.
Oh, good, I'm just, I was just suggesting, it's fine.
We got good feedback from teachers.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
That works.
All right. So I will fill out the request form and I will reach out to the Clucking Cafe again, and if they're not available, I'll go from there. All right, so that's all I had. Next, policies, we have four second read policies, A1, role in adoption of school board policies, E12, flag display, F11, English learners, and F25, which is the section 504 and ADA grievance protocol for students and staff. Oh yeah, sorry, there's more than that. F27, communicable disease mitigation measures for students and staff, G12, proficiency-based graduation requirements, G14, class size policy, so all of those are second reads. Do I have any comments or concerns about any of those? And if not, I would need a motion to accept them.
Make a motion to send them through, fine line?
Thank you, Jeff, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. And then there are four first read policies, D4, visitors, volunteers and work-study students, F13, harassment, hazing and bullying prevention of students, F23, the GRCSU equity policy, G9, the responsible computer network internet use, and I guess there is a fifth one, which is the seventh grade class trip policy. Before we go over this, Sarah and Mike, from your perspective, the updates to D4, do you feel like that will make it easier for volunteers to be able to come into the school?
It still requires them to go through the...
It's the same.
Well, it's a little different.
It delineates, doesn't lump them all into one category, so, yep.
Okay, right, cause the visitors is different.
So it's unsupervised versus supervised.
Well, basically what the, I think the policy is defining them and then how you write your procedures using that definition is what you can do. So all this says is that the screening process may also require a criminal background check, which is the fingerprinting, it doesn't say any of them have to.
Okay.
So that has to, so when you take that into account when you're writing the procedures...
Well, I think...
It gives you a little bit more...
Chris writes them, though.
Well, for instance, from what I've found out, for Poltney, their chaperones on the ski trip do not need to be fingerprinted, whereas that's something that we're going to come across with trying to do lifetime sports.
Right, but they, they may be left alone with students.
At Poltney?
At skiing, for example.
No, I know, but what I'm saying is they are at Poltney. So chaperones, when they go on the ski trip, the lifetime sports there, they do not need to be fingerprinted, but here, for all field trips, they do.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So, I was just saying that there are differences using the same policy across the SU is my point.
I'll share the procedures with you, Sarah, this, this policy was written with Rutland Town in mind.
Yeah.
Okay.
To make it easier.
Right, because we've had the most headaches with, from Rutland Town around this.
I apologize.
Just be honest.
I know, I know, and I do apologize, cause Christine McGinnis, bless her heart, has been on the receiving end of many upset Rutland Town parents over this policy.
Yeah. So this policy has been made so that it should be easier?
Yes.
So, okay, so do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass through D4 through G9.
And the seventh grade policy as well, which is not bolded?
Yes, sorry.
No problem. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, it's unanimous, thank you. Upcoming meetings, we'll have November 14th in the library here at 6:00 PM. I don't see any more teachers or staff around. Executive session, no, just the budget for Louis, we can probably discuss it at next meeting, I think he was looking for a percentage or something, target increase or decrease.
Yeah, just ballpark, yeah, I think we're, do you wanna keep it like say 3%, 1%?
Just start there.
Right, that's usually what Louis initially asked, is just a ballpark, and then he shows you, you know, some boards will say, can you show us what 3% would look like, what 4% would look like, and so he'll provide those adjustments. I know we are adding things to the budget, so, just will.
So maybe just see where it falls out, the way he recommends and then go from there, is that what's the board?
I'd like to keep it around 3%, so, slight increase.
So what will happen probably is we'll take all the additions that the board has given us, we'll show you what that looks like and what that percentage increase is, and then we also might, the four of us sit down, you know, Sarah, Mike, myself and Louis, say, okay, in order to get to 3% or 4%, here's, we'll put this in this column, so.
I think that would be really helpful.
Yep.
Yeah.
So you're asking, so the next meeting, we'll just say, this is what the increase is based upon what you want, and then after the November board meeting, once you say we want it, to see what it looks like at this increase or this increase, then we go?
What I would love is to just do it, you know, with what we've added and what you guys recommend.
Mm-hmm.
So the recommended version, and then if that's higher than 3%, maybe also see what the 3% looked like.
Well, I mean, it will be.
It's gonna be significant.
I know, I know, but sometimes you have to see it in black and white, so it's, it's hard, it's hard when you just see like the up, the 10% one, right? But then when you compare that to the 3%, you're like, oh, now I know why it has to be 10%, or, you just, you have to kinda see it, so if he doesn't mind doing both...
One of the biggest things that we've gotten stung by the last two years is high school tuition.
Mm-hmm.
So we really need to make sure that that's a solid number.
And I think, I mean, everything has gone up, right? So we just had our eighth grade DC meeting tonight, and that per person has gone up by $50, because they're having a tough time finding somebody to drive the bus. And so just like Jeff said, the Betcha went up 8%, they gave salary increases of 8%, so just like we know food costs have gone up, electricity, everything has gone up, therefore...
Apples still going up.
Apples have gone up, the price of apples have gone up, right, and it's still going up, so that's why it's not just what's in the budget, we just know everything, from paper, pencils to transportation, fuel, all of that's going up.
Right.
Okay.
So if it's not too much, it would be really helpful just to have that comparison.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any comments? All right, good in welfare.
I can start. I'd like to shout out to Officer Angie and Lizzietto, my youngest was very nervous about coming to school because of the security system, I don't know why, but they took him around, showed him, every door was locked, the cameras, so now every time he sees Liz in the hallway, he like points up at the cameras, it's like, so it has not been a fight to come to school, but they, I got a picture of them sitting at Officer Angie's desk, going through like, and just looking at the security systems of the school, and it really has eased his mind, so it was just nice to see two adults take time out of their day to really, you know, focus on like a, you know, an anxiety, a true anxiety of a first grader, you know, so it, it definitely warmed our heart and has made Friday mornings much easier at our house, so, you know, that was, it was very awesome of them to do that.
I know my grandson was sick a couple of days and he couldn't make it to school, but he came back, it was, everybody was just so open and kind to him to receive him back into the classroom, and he was so excited to be here, he is just so excited to come to school every day, and that's awesome, that's the work you guys are doing, is awesome, and the teachers, phenomenal.
Thank you.
I was in here this morning for a PTO event, which was not as well-attended as we would have liked, but we're willing to try again, but what I, I've loved was the energy of the school in the morning, you know, the teachers all in the hallway saying hello to each other, the band playing, the students coming in with big smiles on their faces, even though, you know, it's back to school this week after vacation, it was really nice to see that energy in the school, it was very positive and happy.
No, I would, I would agree, I mean, it's really community-based for me, and all my time is spent on the soccer field or football field or whatever, you know, but, you know, just, I think Rutland Town, the community as a whole is just, I find to be really respectful, maybe unbiased, but, you know, and they travel really well together, you know, it's great to see, see them up at different games in different locations and things like that, so, so I think that's something to be proud of, for sure.
Mm-hmm. All right.
Thank you.
Well, then I would take a motion to, oh, Colin, did you wanna add?
Yeah, hey, I guess mine would be, I wanted to say it earlier, but, I'm in a bad spot, I think, you know, we have a lot of, all of our teachers, all of our kids are stars, but some of them shine a little brighter, and Ms. Q is certainly one of those bright shining stars we have, she's fantastic asset for Rutland Town, for our kids, for reading, enthusiasm to what she does and that special skillset that so many kids struggle with is fantastic, so I appreciate her and all the staff, but I wanted to put that on the record, cause she's amazing. That, and you guys can support me virtually going to this, this big meeting, but I'm gonna set up a Venmo so you can monetarily support me for drinks, too.
All righty, I'll take a motion to adjourn after that.
Motion to adjourn?
Thank you, Jeff, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.